Are you guys ready?
Hey folks.
Hey Dave.
Hey folks. Tom, Joe, Chip, Jim, let's see. Sumi. Gail, most importantly.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Mickey, good.
I have to admit, when we found out that Sherry hadn't sent the agenda to some of us, I was hoping she might have forgotten to post it too. So what happened? There was a little bit, just Dave, Mr. Chairman, just a little bit of me said, I wouldn't mind noticing the quarters if you're wearing.
I hear you.
Not so, not so, I'm glad she did everything right, other than get a couple of us not, but. Was it just a few of us or everybody?
Everybody.
Oh, okay. I thought I was crazy not being able to find it.
No, I suspect wrong mailing list. I'm sure she has them for each group, you know, board and committee and stuff that gets invited to those, but it looked like, when I looked at it in our BOA mailbox, it looked like just a different group of people, so.
Okay.
Probably just picked the wrong mailing list, but.
You got one?
I got mine.
Well, you, you and the board email are special, I'm sure, but the rest of the mailing list seemed to be for something else, so. All right, do we have everyone, let's see. Greg, is it Greg we're missing?
I think Greg said he was going to be five, ten minutes late.
That's right, okay. So we could probably get started, take care of administrative things. And dive right in, all right. Close captioning. All right, we'll call this meeting to order at seven oh one PM, the Board of Wakefield, Town Wakefield Board of Appeals Meeting for April twenty six, twenty twenty three. I will start with a roll call of members, so Jim McBane.
Yeah.
Jim Tarbell.
Here.
Tom Lucy.
Here.
Joe Pride.
Here.
Mickey Philly.
Here.
Sumi Humphreys.
Yeah.
And Dave Hadfield Chair is here, Greg McIntosh. Said it'd be a few minutes late, but we will acknowledge him for the record when we do see him show up. All right, on to the legal notice, Joe, you have that handy, I assume.
Yes, I do. Consistent with the government has always extended certain provisions of the open meeting law, every effort will be made to allow the public to view and or listen to this meeting in real time. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dialing number, one, three, oh, one, seven, one, five, eight, five, nine, two, meeting ID, eight, seven, eight, five, two, one, two, zero, five, four, five, passcode, eight, five, three, four, six, three, please use only, please only use dial in our computer and not both, as audio feedback will distort the meeting, this meeting will be audio and video recorded in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, this location is accessible to people with disabilities. Wakefield provides reasonable accommodations and all language assistance free of charge upon request. If you are a person with a disability and require information on materials in an alternate format, or if you require any other accommodations, please call, contact the town's disability coordinator, William Renault, town engineer at seven, eight, one, two, four, six, six, three, oh, eight, as far as advance of the event as possible, every effort will be made to grant your requests, advance notification will enable the town to make reasonable arrangements to remove an accessory accessibility barrier for you, one, continued inheritance, two, twenty-three dash seventy-five, Lori A. Fionda, application for variance on the article for section one ninety dash thirty-one C, six of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to allow above ground swimming pool in the side, yeah, the property is shown as map twenty-three lot parcels, two, six, six, dash, zero, R, one of the excesses map and is located at one sixteen Oak Street, three, twenty-three dash seventy-six. Robert E. Burton, Jr., Patricia A. Burton, Robert E. Burton, III, Melissa J. Pucci, application for a special permit under article four, section one ninety, twenty-two, A, one, F of the Wakefield zoning bylaw seeking to add an accessory apartment to a single family dwelling, this property is shown, is shown as map thirty-five lot parcels, six and zero, seven of the excesses map is located at one twenty-eight Oak Street. Four, twenty-three dash seventy-seven, twenty-three dash seventy-eight, twenty-three dash seventy-nine, Northeast Warehouse Boston LLC. Application for a special permit and site plan approval under article four, section one ninety dash twenty-three and one ninety, one ninety dash forty-five of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to construct in addition to an existing buil- building for retail or service use, accessory to the allowable, allowed warehouse use, application for a determination and or finding with respects to a continuation and extension of non-performing uses on the article, nine, section one ninety dash fifty, and one ninety dash fifty B of the Wakefield zoning bylaw related to certain change extensions or alterations to the premises, including in addition to an existing building. Application for variance under article ten, section one ninety dash sixty-six of the Wakefield zoning bylaw and, sorry, bylaw from the requirements and or standards of off-street parking and loading under article seven of the Wakefield zoning bylaw. The property is shown as map seventeen lot parcel, nineteen twenty-four, the assesses map and is located at three Melvin Street, Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Joe. And for the record, I believe we now have Greg McIntosh, present?
Yes, present.
Thank you, welcome. All right. So we received correspondence requesting continuation of a couple of matters, so we'll take those up now as we always do. So Attorney Brian McGrail dated April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three regarding New Creek LLC at ten Broadway Wakefield. Case numbers twenty-three, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, and forty-two, requesting that we continue the matter until the meeting on May tenth. As we are still in the process of working with Board Member James McBane to review revised plans with the project architect. We're already extended to June thirtieth, so we're covered there, so this is just a request to continue the hearing from this evening to May tenth.
I move that we continue this till May tenth.
Second.
Any discussion? Regular voting membership?
Yes.
Go.
Yes.
Jim? Jim, okay. Jim says yes, he's on mute, but he's waving yes, Tom?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so that's unanimous, if anyone was here for that application, it'll be on our May tenth agenda. Next, also from Attorney Brian McGrail, April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three regarding Granite Family Trust LLC at three fourteen, three thirty, and three thirty-six Salem Street, Wakefield. Case numbers twenty-three dash forty-three through fifty. Requesting that we continue the matter to our meeting on May tenth. Is there now in the process of working with Board Member James McBane to review the revised plans with the project architect? We are also, the extension is already in place through May thirty-first, so we're covered there for now. But, so the request tonight is just to continue the hearing to May tenth.
I move that we continue this here until May tenth.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Our regular voting membership?
Yes.
Go.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That matter is also continued to our May tenth meeting. All right, so we have several continued hearings, I would like to, to once again start off with the with the, the Volk Project, so all members related to that party, please step forward. So we'll take that on first and then we'll go back to the regular order in, in the agenda. So case twenty-three dash sixty, Northeast Metropolitan Regional Vocational School District, eight hundred Hemlock Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of board, Adam Braylard for the applicant Northeast Metropolitan Regional Vocational Technical High School. We've got our crew here today, tonight as well. Dave Conway, Dave Warner, Carl Franceschi, Joe DeSantos, Santa Sari. We also got Dave DiBari. Kevin Nygro is not here today. And Rob Schlein and Julie Berry with my office are here in connection with the, the application, just recapping, I know it's gonna be a long night, so I don't want to be overly wordy, we met with this board initially on the twenty-second and then again on the twelfth to twenty-second of March and then again on the twelfth of April. And during the, the hearing on the twelfth, the board asked if the applicant could meet with the town engineer, the town council, and the board chair in a, in a, in a separate meeting. And on the twenty-first, which was last Friday, we did meet with Mr. Mullen, which is the town council, as well as Mr. Hadfield, the, this board's chair, and Mr. Renault, the town engineer, and discuss the additional information that the town and the board would like to have to, to make, to make a determination, again, we've, we've requested from the board to make a determination that specific residential requirements set forth in the town's bylaw underneath or under the single residential zoning district are unreasonable as they relate to the, to the project under Massachusetts General Law, chapter forty, A, section three, also known as the Dover Amendment. So as a result of the meeting on the twenty-first, the applicant provided some additional information on Monday, which included a response to a zoning analysis table that the, that the town had prepared and asked the applicant to review, as well as additional zoning site plans and some additional information that the town had in various forms, but we put it all in one kind of spot for them to review, which included civil drawings, landscape drawings, site photometric plans, architectural plans, stormwater report and traffic report. So we're here, I guess, to, to review anything the board would, would like to, answer any questions the board may have, as well as the public may have in connection with anything new that comes up.
Okay. So do you want to share your screen and perhaps run down just a list of additional things, again, we covered some of this ground at the previous meetings, but just to be clear, it looks like a couple of other items may be up for discussion, the rest, board members hopefully had a chance to go to the table. Again, we, we had this meeting, we, we looked at other paragraphs that, again, we, we thought should be at least considered and make sure they're either compliant or perhaps need some request or add to the list of things that we would need to be, we would potentially need to deem unreasonable to adhere with in this district. And I saw one or two others that maybe we just need to discuss and make sure we're clear on.
Yeah, sure, Mr. Chair, would you, would you think we should, I should share, or somebody in my team should share the screen of the, the table? Is that the easiest way to do this?
Sure. Yes. Again, we don't have to read every word, we've, we've received the material, but maybe just quickly go down, so, you know, we know what section we're talking about and, and if it complies, you know, we've, we've seen the evidence that references the applicable part of the plan. And maybe just focus on the things that maybe just need discussion, you know?
Sure. Let me ask Carl, do you have that handy, or Joe? My version unfortunately is all marked up and I can find it, I just, I, I just want to make sure that we have the one that was submitted to the, to the town.
I could do that, Adam.
That's great.
For the record, Carl Franceschi, DRA Architects, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Happy to, to walk through materials, I think, let me see if I can share, is that large enough to read?
Yes, it is.
On your screen?
I think so, I think so, yeah.
Yes, of, of the numerous items on, on the list, I think you can see that most everyone is, in our opinion, either complies or is, is, you might say complies under the Dover Amendment, because it, it's, you know, unreasonable, because it, it's a sort of single-family residence kind of reference that, that i- is not really applicable to a project of this scale and scope and, and so forth, but we're happy to take up the ones that you, you feel need additional discussion. I guess, starting with the first one, since there was some note there that says may need request and our understanding of this one, this is parking specifically of unregistered vehicles in a, in a single-family residence zone, which i- is not allowed in, under your zoning code is, is, in a strict reading of single-family use, but obviously in, in this case, the, the Northeast Metro Tech school is in the business of teaching automotive technology and, and auto body repair, and they do work on unregistered vehicles and they do store them. It, it's difficult to quantify exactly at any time in the school year as to how many vehicles are on site. And it's also difficult to say if they're actually exterior, because they do store some inside the building in their shop areas. And I put the, the number on, at any given time somewhere between maybe eight to twelve vehicles, so-called unregistered vehicles that have been donated generally to the school for the students' use and, and repair and training and so forth, so again, we think it's perfectly reasonable and, and obviously it's crucial to the use of this, that we believe that with your exemption, which is allowed, actually for single-family residences, actually to give, grant an exemption. We, we think that's appropriate here to, to grant that relief, if you want to call it that.
Okay. Any questions on this, on board members? Yeah, why don't we just, you know?
Go one by one?
Yeah, go one by one on the ones that, you know, just may need some discussion, just see if other board members have any questions, if not, we'll move on and we'll just put it on the list, but I think this one is something that would be on our list of you know, granting some form of relief or, or finding, so board members, any questions on this one?
Dave, I don't have a question on this. I have a question on what we're, for our process tonight. So this was not on their original request. It certainly looks like it should have been. Are we just saying, yes, are we? What are we trying to do here?
So after the last meeting, we, we agreed to go back and look at, have a discussion, we thought that perhaps other parts of the zoning bylaw may be things that we should look at and ensure that this project either complies with or we would deem, or they would ask us to deem unreasonable to comply with.
Okay, so the building inspector did not deny the building permit based on, let's just take this one as an example. He only denied it on two fronts. So are we changing our approach that we're looking at all zoning now and then addressing whether we're okay with it or not?
Yes. Yes. Yes, Mr. Mullen did agree that it doesn't invalidate the original path by which the, the applicant got to us, right? Their original application did list the two items, three items, actually. The landscaping and that parking lot was another one, but we could, we could consider other things in the course of a public hearing and, and that's what has happened. We've asked them to consider other things that we think, in my opinion, and Bill Renault, we, we can coordinate it on this and ask them to consider these other sections of the bylaw that may be relevant for a project like this in a single-residence district. And so we can consider them and it doesn't affect the original application. It's just other items that we would potentially just need to consider and make a finding on at the end.
Okay, so we would find on any one of these, just as we would the twenty versus twenty-four foot driveway.
Correct, which is on the list further down in the height and the building size.
I'm just trying to understand process, so I can take notes.
Okay.
If I could also, in, in respect to Mr. Tarbell's question, the reason we did not list something like this is again, in our opinion, we, we believe this to fall under the sort of category of, of use, not, not dimensional requirement and therefore was not under the purview of the Dover Amendment, because it's the use of, you know, unregistered vehicles is related to the use as an educational school, but we understand this, you know, discussion that we held and we're willing to go through this process tonight.
And we appreciate that, we, just again, it was a good constructive meeting and just to consider, just to make sure we covered the basis, right? Whether it, whether truly, you know, was within the confines of what the language is in the Dover Amendment, or just according to our bylaws, there are some things here that we just want to make sure we're accounted for just to do our due diligence before we rendered any sort of voter decision, so. So let's proceed, again, I don't think we need to spend time on the ones where you feel you need relief unless board members have questions on them. Let's try to focus on the ones where, where we just relief may be needed or we may need to include in any finding. So the next one is a few rows down.
Do, do you want to go one by one in terms of, or any objection or any you know, consensus, or should we just go through them all and then have a
I would put it out to the board members, if, if they're okay with the explanations that are provided on the ones that you comply with, I've read them and I, and I agree with them, so unless other board members want to chime in, I would say go to the next one where there's a there's a no or really requested.
Very well, 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 the, the next one is, is the next one down. Parking in a resident zone relative to commercial vehicles, here again, it's, it's a gray area. The, the school does not literally own commercial vehicles, they're a nonprofit educational use, they're not, you know, using vehicles in, in a business sense. They do own a number of small passenger vans, pickup trucks, trailers that they use for when the students, particularly in the construction trades, go out in, in the community to build projects, the trailers to take their equipment and, and supplies, so they're all used for educational purposes. I, I believe the number that they own is, is approximately twenty-five. Most of these vehicles are housed in that parking lot, by the way, that we had talked about last week, last meeting, rather, the, the thirty-nine parking space parking lot, the sort of remote parking on, on the site. And so a- again, here, it's a use that we think obviously is, is vital to, to the educational purpose and, and therefore, you know, is unreasonable to apply the commercial restriction, even if you consider these commercial vehicles, which we're not sure you do, but we just wanted to be you know, thorough.
Okay, so I would put this on the list of things we, I would say was ZBA exemption, right, because you're saying it doesn't comply, but it's unreasonable to expect it to comply, so I would actually put that on the list. Chip, if you're keeping a list.
So, Mr. Chair, are these, I mean, I guess, I have no problem with saying it's reasonable, but to even need it, are they, what are the pla- are the plates commercial plates, or are they some sort of state?
They're, they're not, they're not commercial plates. The, the vans have bus, but they're not commercial plates.
So I don't think we need this one.
Okay.
I would agree.
Okay, then.
Just go to the ones we think we need relief on, to go through each one of these, that some of them are obvious. I don't think that's a good use of our time.
Yeah.
There aren't that many others.
Carl, do you want to jump? Do you want to jump to the, to, I mean, we talked, we've talked about the driveway with
The driveway, that's one again, I think we've presented the evidence there.
Right.
And, and the plans that, that go with it with dimensional. And we've talked about the stories and the height. And we've provided additional drawings.
And I just want to be clear on this, because I, I don't know that, I don't recall if the original application accounted for both, we just want to make sure it's clear that it's both from the number of stories and the height.
Yes, we broke it into two separate categories there, yes.
For board members, yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay. Then, then there's one here, zoning bylaw one ninety dash thirty-one K about the, the shape of lots. This, this one again is a very gray area, because when, first of all, when this lot was constructed back in nineteen sixty-two, you did not have this bylaw. So in that sense, it's a pre-existing condition, which in and of itself probably i- is, is a reason for, for relief, but we also, your, your bylaw also states that, you know, this is for irregular shaped lots needing to meet a certain mathematical ratio, and we calculated it, and our lot does not literally meet the, that geometry. But it, your, your bylaw also says that if you can inscribe a legal lot within the lot, it, it does, it does comply or can with, in this case, I think it said planning board exemption or review. The, the minimum lot size in this district is four thousand feet, which, for instance, is fifty feet by eighty feet. We can get, I don't know, a hundred such lots in, in our lot, so again, there's a technicality here, but just to be conscientious, we listed it again, as saying yes with your exemption.
Okay. Any questions on that one, board members? Okay. So I would just put that on the list again to cover the bases. All right?
Yeah. Otherwise, going down the list, I'm trying to see if there were any others that many of them say, if you read the town's comment, I'm sorry for skipping over them, they say applicants should provide a plan showing this requirement is met. And, and I know we, we delivered, I think, something like seventy plans to you, there's a lot to go through, but I believe that we've supplied the plans that, that, that do, you know, show compliance with all of these dimensional requirements, that's why we listed them all as yes. Um, uh, requirements. That's why we listed them all as yes. I, I don't mean to skip over them, but. Uh, unless there's a question, I, I think we have provided the information for all of those. So the, the only other ones that, yeah, that, that's it on the list, including, by the way, we added at the bottom here. Um, as a result of that meeting too, there was a request that we respond to the comments that you've received. Uh, again, under the Dover Amendment, I'm not sure this is the same as your ordinary site plan review, but. Because you distributed the plans to certain agencies like DPW Engineering, they had some comments or. The Traffic Advisory did, the Disabilities Commission did, and the Community and Economic Development Group did. And I think we've responded to all of those as noted here in our responses. Um, and the materials are, are, are part of the plans that, that were submitted. So we don't see any outstanding issues a- as far as responding to those comments. Um, uh, uh, either, so, uh, I, I believe that's it, Mr. Chairman, in terms of the, the table.
Okay, and can you, were you also sharing up, up the, the other file or the plan, just so? That, again, a lot of these are demonstrated either on the plan itself or in.
Yes, if we, if we zoom in on this, y- you know, this table is, has been part of this plan. We've updated it. To, to show everything, you know, what the requirement was, what, what is being provided in, in every category, and it's also. Shown, for instance, you know, like the, the, the front yard, we're showing, you know, twenty feet. We're showing our front yard is actually a thousand. Eleven, a hundred and thirty-five feet, the lot frontage is seven hundred and twenty feet. So the plan. You know, all of those dimensional requirements are, are, you know, noted on, on this plan. Um, in a graphic sense, but obviously we've submitted all of the very detailed. Uh, construction documents too, that, that show the, the same sorts of things, like the dimensions of parking lots and parking stalls and drive aisles. And so forth in the layout drawings. Um, the, the actual driveway widths are noted on the layout plan. Um, to show the two twelve-foot lanes, twenty-four foot wide, for instance, and, and so forth. So, I, I don't know that there was anything um, new on, on this plan here. Um, but it's just supporting information, yes.
Right, and what's the date of this plan that he said has been updated?
Would, I think we dated things uh, the twenty-fourth, yes.
Okay.
Uh, was that Monday? Yes, when we, when we submitted all of this.
Okay.
Along with the table.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Yep, any questions, board members, on the additional uh, information presented this evening?
Yeah. There's at least one more in the materials we got that wasn't discussed tonight.
I'm sorry, what's that, Greg?
One more, uh, one ninety thirty-seven E about parking lots and number of trees that are supposed to be in them.
Oh, okay.
So I think I'm trying to point your right to it. Uh, I think it's row twenty-five, maybe, in the.
I- in um.
And, and maybe it was updated in these plans, and that's why you didn't.
Ri- right here, right here. Um, landscaping and parking lots, the requirement is that at least five percent of the interior of parking lots. With forty more cars shall be landscaped. Um, the, the actual calculated area on the two large lots that we have, I'll show them on the plan in a moment. Is, one of them is just about fifteen percent landscaped, and the other one is twenty-eight percent landscaped. And those are these two lots. Um, this one here. You can see there's, there're um, planted aisles with trees. Um, and, and landscaping i- in this large lot, and then the second lot that um, is, falls under this jurisdiction is this lower lot. And again, has a large um, uh, landscaped aisle down the middle of it here as well. And we did submit the landscaping, the detailed landscaping plans that go with this, um, as part of the, the submission.
So, so I think the, the specific comment. That our, I guess whoever this came from, maybe our engineering department, DPW, I'm not sure. Um, so it has that the, you know, one ninety thirty-seven E also requires parking lots of a forty spaces to be planted with shade trees. At a ratio of one tree for each two thousand square feet. Uh, they must be, trees must be planted in the interior of the parking lot to be counted. Uh, you know, the lot with one hundred and sixty-seven, uh, one hundred and sixty-six spaces requires thirty-two trees. It's showing. Um, seven, uh, yeah, the lot with one hundred and seventy-three spaces requires thirty-six. It's showing twenty-one. So that's a different part. Yes, it's, there's the five percent requirement, but there's also the, the number of trees.
We do have our landscape architect with us. I don't know, David Warner, if you want to speak to that.
Uh, yeah, Carl, I was just uh, looking for that information in my communication with uh, staff. Um, they uh, did the count and verified compliance, so I don't have that at my fingertips. But if we maybe can come back to that, I can probably pull it up.
Look at the landscape plan too, uh, um, if we have it here.
And just for reference, Dave, I don't, I don't know the back and forth of how the, you know, these documents got us, but it's in that last column. In the, in the Excel spreadsheet that you sent to us. Not sure who made those comments.
There we, we just, um.
No, I, I know, I was talking to the, the chair. We, I think we have an additional column.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. McIntosh, I don't think we've seen that. I- i- it's that communication was recent. I don't, I don't know if we've seen that, that information.
I don't know the, the back and forth and really the genesis of that comment, but it isn't hard. And I mean, and if it, and it is, I looked up the bylaw, it is part of the, the zoning bylaw, so it's really not new, necessarily a new information.
Right, right, no, I'm just.
Out at the beginning anyways.
Right.
So Greg, yeah, I'm not, I mean, the copy that I have, I don't, I just don't see it, uh, right now.
Greg, can you share your screen with it?
Just emails first. Um, there you go. I need to make it smaller or bigger or anything.
No, that's big enough, so there's this column G with highlighting. Interesting.
That's it, that's not, I mean, I got that from whatever information you put out.
Can you just scroll up? Are there, are there comments like this in every cell or just, okay, agreed, agreed?
So.
Yeah, and then if you go to the top, it says town engineer response.
Oh, okay, so we did receive correspondence from the town engineer. Yes, 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 yes. Okay.
But I don't think we received that. Which, you know, this, just want to point that out.
No, I understand. That is.
I understand that in some respect, but also if this is part of the bylaw, then it, the informations. Should have been, you know, there from the initial filing anyways.
Yeah, so.
Kim Wilson from Engineering Department has his hand up.
Okay, let me just, I'm switching between but, windows myself to try to see the application, so. Um, Tim Wilson, I, the chair will recognize you as I think the correspondence came from you on behalf of the Engineering Department.
Uh, Tim Wilson, uh, ta- uh, from the Engineering Department. I had sent the correspondence on behalf of the town engineer. Um, that correspondence went to uh, the board, I guess I should say, Gail, uh, Dave asked to be. Sent to the board and also sent to Kevin Niagara. So I'm not sure, he's not here tonight, so I'm not sure if you'd seen it. Um, I believe that went out yesterday. Um, afternoon.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, this is Rob Schlein from the project team. Um, is it feasible to simply add it to the. Requested relief, um, as actually I think I saw was suggested in those notes. From the town engineer, as, as, as you well know, and as the Conservation Commission is well aware. The site is full of trees and is ringed by trees, and I think we've also demonstrated. That the building is virtually not visible from the street because of trees, and it really would be. Unfeasible, and I'm going to say, suggest unreasonable to have that many trees in the parking lots. So I think the easiest and most expedient and pro- and the right thing to do is to add that to our request for relief.
Okay.
No, sorry, Mr. Orga, or, or whoever, Dave, sorry, Dave, set that on you.
So, Mr. Warner, are you part of the project team?
Yes, I am. I'm the landscape architect working with DRA Architects. Um, I would just echo uh, Mr. Schlein's. Suggestion, uh, because the uh, landscaping plan, the planting plan that we've developed for the interior of these parking lots, we believe is a. Appropriate in terms of the uh, quantity of trees as it relates to some of the uh, subsurface improvements as well. Uh, we had to coordinate with the under drainage system, the stormwater under drainage system, which uh, prohibits us from planting on top of them. Um, and, you know, I think that uh, just in terms of good practice and long-term uh, planning for maintenance. Uh, and the spacing of the trees, snow removal, we've um, placed the trees where we think are appropriate and. To comply with the quantity of trees in the bylaw for this application, I think would be unreasonable. Uh, it, it wouldn't work as well for the school in, in the long term, in terms of maintenance, and. We would have to cluster them closer together because of the subsurface infiltration systems that we can't plant on top of.
Okay. So board members, are you um, any comments on that and, and potentially just adding this to the list?
Yeah, Dave, I'm okay to add it to the list. I, I guess my concern is. That it wasn't thought of prior to this, you know, that it wasn't seen or known. I, I just question whether they even were aware of the bylaw. I mean, it, it sounds like they're making up the, you know, in all other reas- you know. We got a kind of a quick response as to why it would be unreasonable, but not real thought out, so. I'm okay with it, but it's frustrating that it wasn't presented at the beginning.
Mm-hmm.
My humble opinion.
I, I agree. It's just a little frustrating after being essentially spoken to the last meeting that but for. Two items to be able to build it, and this one we're bringing up and they're just realizing tonight, but I think overall. You know, I, I think, you know, they did present an unreasonable, evidence of unreasonableness, but I mean, it's just a little. Last minute is disconcerting in my mind. When it really should have been on the original proposal anyways. It's nothing new. It's, it's been in the, the language of the bylaw since this was a- applied for.
Chairman, it's Carl Franceschi again. If I could share the screen again, I, I could um.
Okay.
Sort of support that, um, can people see this plan? This is the um, planting plan. And um, you can see the underground uh, detention uh, systems here for drainage. In, in several areas under the parking lot, including, you know, under some of the landscaped islands, and, and. Um, this was a change again, working with the town engineer to um, to minimize our impact on the site otherwise and, and to. Uh, sort of coordinate uh, uh, the drainage uh, on the plan. This was worked out with them, and so we did. Actually, um, you can see eliminate some trees, some opportunity for trees. We can't plant over those areas. I- in those areas, and otherwise we've put in a fairly regular. Um, uh, you know, order of trees in, in these aisles. Um, in these islands, rather. So I, 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 I understand that this is late and we, we um, didn't uh, list it originally. But I believe it still falls under that category of um. Uh, appropriate for, for the use here, and, and, and as we said, the, the parking lots are not only interior landscaped, but. Are surrounded by uh, forest and, and trees on all sides, even, you know, on the outside of, of the parking lot as well. So thank you for that. Now, Dave, I agree. It's, you know, um, it's just, you know, I'm prepared to, to support, especially on the height and the driveway, but that. It, it's just sloppy, and there's a lot of eyes on this, a lot of pressure on the local boards and everyone to get it right and not to have them. Identify this upfront. I don't want to echo, I'm just echoing what Greg and. Chip said, but, you know, they've made their case, but.
Okay, point taken. And I think they've heard it. Okay, um, I'm just going down the list now that we're all kind of looking at this. Um, I think the. So on number. One ninety thirty-eight, design and layout of off-street loading. Criteria not defined for single-residence district, demonstrating compliance with industrial district requirements. So let's just take a quick look at that, because the engineering department had a comment on this one. I just want to make sure we're comfortable with this, one ninety thirty-eight.
We, we do actually have um. Not, not only uh, uh, three um. Loading bays related to the, to the kitchen and deliveries, but we have about, I think it's twelve. Loading bays to surface the, the career tech shops uh, on the project. Um, so we, we certainly believe this complies, and it's again related to the use. Um, uh, here, so I, I could show again if uh.
Yeah, maybe the plan, again, it talks of the design, you know, the size of these spaces, right, and location. Um, maneuvering and access, you know, that it doesn't cause a nuisance, so I think we could see that visually if we brought up the plan. Um. And then around the construction, graded, surfaced and drained to the satisfaction of the TPW, does it, uh, so. Um, and I'm just looking at the engineering comments. Loading spaces are not clearly labeled and dimensions on the layout plans. It appears they encroach on the drive aisle. The paragraph requires that loading spaces exclude drives and maneuvering space, recommends that the plans be updated. To show dimensions and compliance, basically, so I'm now switching over to the plan. So where are the, where are the loading areas?
Um, thi- this is um, intended to be a, a one-way circulation here, so trucks, trucks would pull in. And back up, whoops, sorry, would back up. Uh, there's a raised loading for, for those trucks that have a, you know, need a loading dock height. And then there are two loading bays at grade parallel, so they're, they're parallel to the building here. Twelve feet wide, fifty feet long, twelve foot wide, fifty foot long. The, the engineering comment is correct that they're not shown here, you know, painted on the ground uh, with a rectangle. But that they, they clearly fit in here, three of them. Um, a- and, you know, can maneuver because the truck pulls straight in a- and back straight back um, to each of those. And then the, in perpendicular to the building, uh, on this side of the building, there's, there's three or four overhead doors. A- and on um, uh, this side of the building, on, on the lower level, there, there's another, I think it's about six doors. Uh, down here, these are, are shorter ones, not, not um, fifty foot um, long, but thirty foot there. But again, it, it's, it's functional, the, the school has reviewed it for their own use. Um, when we talk about, um, you know, free and clear of, of drive aisles, th- this is really a service yard. It, it's. It's not, you know, a driveway for any other purpose really, but uh, for service um, back here.
Mr. Chairman, uh, this is Rob Schlein again. May I be heard on the trees in the parking lot uh, issue that we just left? I just had a, a kind of reconstructed our thinking on this, and I wanted to uh, say something about it for the record.
Okay, can we just pause and just hold that button until we finish this one, just so we not have to.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, board members, you comfortable with this, uh, you know, given what's being presented and in light of the engineering department's comments?
If I were to draw it, I could show you. It's about like this.
Kyle, is there a better plan than this? Like, you have a, maybe a. I don't know, you have some kind of.
Uh, I have a diagram, I'm sorry, that wasn't submitted a- as part of your.
And it's, I don't know, it's hard to see on this plan from, from my eyes, anyways, it's too many lines.
Yeah, let me see if.
Were you outlining a, a, a tractor trailer? Were you outlining a a tractor trailer like?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's what you were.
Uh, let me see, David Warner sent me one. Oops. David, do you have access to that? I thought I had it loaded here, but, um I don't see it um right here, but we we were aware that perhaps you'd want to see a diagram of it. So we we had prepared, um one, um.
Yeah, Carl, I can.
Part of the construction documents. Do you have it, Dave?
I I will in a minute, yeah.
Okay, I'll stop sharing there.
So while he's following that up.
Yes.
Carl, did you say, so that's beh- I guess what you would call behind the score, right? Like sort of by that ledge area?
Service yard, yes.
So you you're calling it a service yard, but I think earlier you said that's where buses will pick up and drop off or or maybe just one pickup or drop off or something. So it's not really a service yard, right?
Pick up in in the afternoon, yes, pick up in the afternoon.
So it's not really service yard. Will those Just trying to understand how it even operates.
Mister Chairman, I can ex- Uh, so what we have outlined here, one, two, and three are the dimensional uh requirements for loading zones or loading bays. And one is located directly at the loading dock. And you can see that the drive aisle with the um gate um allows for maneuvering all the way by that. And then the other two are on a flat paved surface in front of the um dumpsters with compactors. So, um, those don't have the benefit of being in a loading dock, but the bylaw doesn't specifically state they have to be at a dock. So you can have a lift gate or forklift service those trucks that might be parked there simultaneously.
Okay, we should, we should point out this, you know, again, it it's a school. It's not a commercial operation. We're not manufacturing things and shipping them out on a daily basis. This school generally receives deliveries one truck at a time um early in the morning before school business starts generally. And during the school day, it's rare that there are deliveries, that they coordinate the timing. Um, and the other loading, uh, two and three are really just for to pick up at the dumpsters uh there. Um, so uh, it it again cer- certainly seems reasonable with the functioning of of the school. And and it does not block the drive aisle. Um, in 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 that sense, not that the trucks would ever be here when buses are here, but um, if for some reason that that was a concern, the drive aisle is still passable. Loading bays there.
Two quick questions, Mickey Feely, um. One is, uh, did the fire department have any um comments on this configuration? And, um.
No, no, they did not. We we've had several reviews with them. We've located hydrants and fire alarm, you know, anunciator panels and hose bib connections. Um, uh, fire hose connections with them and that they didn't have a problem. And we've reviewed the circulation with the police and the fire departments on a couple of occasions during the design phase of the project.
Now, those, um, and the and the measurements of those purple blocks, those are the truck, right?
What, twelve by fifty is is your.
How do they open the doors? Just.
So it's a space, like a parking space, right? This isn't the truck size.
Um, that's the the base size that's required in your zoning bylaw, twelve foot by fifty foot.
All right, then. Right, and the bylaw does, it's calling out business district and and industrial district, and we're talking about single residents, but they can, in the spirit of, you know, there is an area allocated, is it, you know, if it was obstructing a drive aisle or something, we'd have to adjust for that, I think. But the physical dimensions, uh, it seems reasonable um to me. You know, not constituting a nuisance or a hazard, unreasonable pet impediment on traffic, right? And just the construction of them, um, I think it's been reviewed so by by the engineering department and so forth. So I'm I'm okay with this one. Does anyone, any other board members have concerns with this one? Okay.
Mister Chair Adam Breiler, just just for procedural, okay, in the sense that it we're not requesting that the board make a determination of reason in this year because it doesn't comply or we conform with the requirements of the bylaw, correct? That that's your analysis.
Yeah, so I'll give, I'll give Tim, because of the the information is coming from the engineering department. So, Tim, if you want to chime in again, I mean, we're it it again, it's a gray area because it's referencing districts that aren't, right, this isn't the district in question with some of those aspects of the bylaw. And if they're constructed and designed such that, again, they're generally workable and not interfering traffic flow. I I'm not sure what else the the zoning board needs to to find in terms of relief here.
Yeah, no, we we honestly, I looked at the plan and I said, there should be plenty of room for this, which is very unclear to me what was what was being called out as a loading zone.
Okay.
This right here clearly shows the space for the zones as required, you know, as far as what I I read our bylaws saying. I don't have any problem with it.
Okay, thank you for that.
Great, thank you.
Okay. And I'm just looking. So the rest, it seemed like, again, with that additional information and input from that um engineering department, they're either, you know, addressed comments or addressed, they agree, or they're consistent in terms of requesting relief, like areas may not be covered, so. They think. So thank, great, good catch, Greg. I'm glad you brought it up again. There's so many material sent to us within a few days of this meeting. This column I just missed as well, and it sounds like we all did. Uh, but I will, Adam and team, I'll forward it on to you just so you have it again. So you you've got all the information we have as well. Um, this one just, you know, this additional comment on the end, uh, we did not get. And I think Jim said he sent it to one member of the team, but maybe it just didn't make the rounds.
As as discussed on Friday, Kevin's out of the country this week.
Yep, okay. Uh, Jim, yes?
Um, not on this topic, um, but I I believe, um, and I just want to know status. The DPW was looking for more information or closing an issue. And so I was wondering about what the status of that is. And the other one is, where are we with, where is COMCOM on this project?
Okay, I'm I'm not sure I followed the first part.
Well, I think the DPW basically was asking for more information, more documents that they had, they hadn't had at the time of the last meeting, and they may have now. Um, so I'm wondering whether DPW is satisfied. They've got everything they need. And then what is the status, as I said, with COMCOM? So we know where that, where those two topics are at this point.
Uh, I can speak to the DPW question, um, as part of that that, um, response we sent out. Uh, I believe one of the comments noted that we felt most of the information was miss, uh, required uh that we required was provided. Um, as noted, we had questions on that that uh loading zone thing. But, you know, with the diagram shown, that is also, I I believe they provided the information we needed. So, uh, in our, in our mind, all the information we requested was provided to review the plans. Um, you know, to check it for what we were looking for. Uh, I can't speak, uh, for the conservation commission, uh, you know, I, it's still in that process. I can tell you, the engineering division, um, we feel that the the stormwater plan is is pretty much there. There's a few minor tweaks that need to be made. Um, just to, you know, kind of tie up some new loose ends, but we don't really expect any major changes on the plan for the stormwater part at this point.
And I know that hearing isn't quite closed. I think it was continued to early May, right? So it's near the end. I even saw it in the paper. Um, so they're not quite close with them, Jim, but it sounds like they're close.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. All right, there was a previous comment about landscaping and trees. I forget who brought that up, if you can raise your hand and come on back to the the food and clothes on that one. I didn't forget about you.
Mister Chairman, it's Rob Schlein. Um, if if you, if if the board prefers to address the issue of the trees in the parking lots, um, we have no objection to it, but I just wanted to share maybe our thinking about it. Which is that although the Dover amendment does, from, which is a general exemption from zoning, as we've discussed, uh, it does permit the board to consider parking. Um, we view trees in the parking lot, or at least we viewed trees in the parking lot, the number of them as much more of a landscaping requirement. And therefore that we would be exempt from it under the Dover amendment. So if, uh I'll I'll leave it to the board's pleasure as to whether it wants to address the issue in its findings or not. If it doesn't, I still think we're fine. Because again, we we would be exempt from what is essentially a a landscaping requirement.
Good, thank you. Okay, board members, um. So looking back at the list, I'll just go back quickly. Um, the first item we touched on um, the driveway width, again, this number of stories and height. So there's really four items there.
And you put the list back up, Dave, because we said one ninety dash twenty-one A.
Yep. It it was a Carl who was sharing before?
I I could do that.
Just so we just quickly run down and just say, okay, having gone through it all this, so it's one ninety twenty-one A.
Do we, do we think we need to list that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And then I think we're okay, I think, um, because if they're not actually commercial vehicles, then I think the next one's okay from discussion on that. So then it's the driveway width, one ninety thirty-one C one. It is thirty-one E with the number of stories and the height, both parts. Right? Um, one ninety thirty-one K, the irregular shape, again. I think, I think just to cover the bases, we should include that. And then the last one is just this landscaping in the lot, one ninety thirty-seven.
I think we should include it.
Okay. So that would be the full list. Again, having considered, again, a few more aspects of of the zoning bylaw as it relates to a project of this nature and in this lot, type of residence lot. I think, you know, if if we appreciate the effort that they went through to to look at these additional areas at our request. Um, both myself and, um, uh, on behalf of Bill Renault and the engineering department. Um, you know, with with Tom Mullins' um participation in that discussion. So we appreciate that the the additional information. I think this this serves us well to just ensure that we've we've, you know, covered the bases and 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 looked at as much as we think is within our purview, uh, with respect to the bylaws, um, in this regard. So, so with that, I'm I'm good. Um, any other board members have other comments or questions at this time? So once again, and perhaps the last time, we'll see, um, who'll open up the public testimony. If anyone has a common question about the information that we've discussed tonight, please raise your hand in the meeting at this time. I see a Bob. So, Bob, please come off mute and just state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure, thank you, Mister Chairman. Uh, Bob Brooks, uh, seven June Circle, uh, butter to the project. I'm sorry, I missed the uh early part of the meeting. Um, I had problems with the voice on the computer. So I missed, uh, some of the context. I'm not sure if this pertains to it, but, um a couple of years ago with, uh, some of the school in the presentation, uh, there was a question by myself and one of the butters asked about the equipment. Um, there are compressors and equipment that would be on the roof. And knowing that the size of the building now is going to be from, you know, thirty-five sod feet to sixty-eight feet. Um, is there, is there any, uh, I know there's some mass regulations about noise, uh, in the area. Is that, is that brought up or contained by the zoning board, or is that another issue that has to be uh dealt with, uh, in the future? When we did ask the question about it, we were told that what they didn't have the equipment and they had no idea what the noise would be or uh, how to mitigate it. So I don't, I'm not sure if I'm bringing up the right question, but I'm kind of concerned about that, especially in the location of us being in the lower part of the valley and the noise travel in the area. And looking out my backyard, um, the area from the school and parking is going to be about four hundred feet. So I anticipate, you know, a substantial amount of noise and how can that be mitigated?
Okay, um. So on some projects, this board would uh, look at things like what's on the roof and what kind of noise might emanate and any screening that would be, um, proposed. Um, I I would just ask the team, I don't know that it falls within the purview of what we're we've, um, been asked to look at, but is there I assume there's there's equipment that's going to go on the roof of the school and there's potentially some screening that is being contemplated to to mitigate any sort of attenuation of noise from the site.
Yeah, I've no, I've never heard any communication about it.
No, I'm asking the team, Bob.
Okay, I'm sorry, thank you.
I'm asking the team to.
Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mister Chairman, this is Carl Franceschi again, DRA Architects. Uh, there is some rooftop ventilation equipment um, uh, on the project. Um, we do have an acoustical engineer, uh, on our team who will ensure that the the project meets the, there, there are state guidelines for noise generation um, with decibel levels measured at the property lines. I don't know that Wakefield, uh, supersedes those, um, uh, requirements, but um, I don't believe it's a zoning issue, but it it is an operational issue and and we will ensure that we comply with that.
All right, okay, thank you. Mister Brooks, did you have any other comments?
Uh, no, that was, that was about it. I didn't know if there was any mitigation answers because we talked about, um, in the past that, uh, uh, Mister Franchetti, uh, we talked about, you know, mitigating the noise as far as, uh, traffic, uh, going up to, uh, up on the, uh, New Access roadway, the rooftop, because she's, he's aware of that, but not knowing what the equipment is, uh. How can it be mitigated? I know the the ambience is somewhere within ten decibels of the ambient noise and not sure exactly what it would be, but if, um, you know, if that's something they will look at seriously, because from my area, two, three hundred feet away, you know, you can hear people walking by and you can hear, you know, dogs out there. So I would assume that, uh, equipment running twenty-four, seven on the rooftops would be very loud.
But again, it's very common that there's screening and and that shields some of that, but I I think when it's up and running, if they, if those measures have not, um, proven to be effective, then that's something that can certainly be looked at after the fact, but um, I'm I'm taking them into their word, what they're saying that they're, they've got it as part of their plan to ensure that it meets the state regs and Wakefield does not supersede that.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Any other hands? Seeing none, we'll close it to public testimony. Yep, um, so I think it, this again is an appeal of the building inspector, so I think we just need to find, make that finding.
And we're gonna find the five things that we just listed.
That are, we would deem unreasonable to adhere to in the single residence district for the purpose of of an educational use. Um, according to the plan that they presented. So I think that's just procedure, just so we're clear. Is any last minute comments from any board members? Are we ready to proceed to a vote? Okay, Chip, take it away.
So, Mister Chairman, I move that under, um, that in their request for a finding, uh, that we grant the finding, uh, of that they meet the Dover amendment and that, uh, in respect to one ninety dash twenty-one A, one ninety dash thirty-one C one, one ninety dash thirty-one K, one ninety dash thirty-one E and one ninety dash thirty-seven E, it would be unreasonable uh, within an educational use to apply the residential requirements in these cases and that they have demonstrated uh, their need and desire for these uses.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? And we'll note again that the the plans that we've made that determination is based on.
Yeah.
Um, okay. All right, regular voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, so it's unanimous, um. You have the finding from the board. We can work offline on getting it written up appropriately, Adam. Uh, we can, we can talk on that.
Absolutely.
All right. Well, thank you for your time and your patience as we work through this. All right. Well, thank you for your time and your patience as we work through this. I appreciate it, I think.
Thank you for your consideration.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care.
So back to the top of the agenda of continued hearings, the next one on the list, twenty-three dash fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen. Kingman Block LLC at three sixty-nine to three seventy-one Main Street. And we welcome this evening, Brian McGraw.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, good evening. Uh, for the record, Attorney Brian McGreal for Kingman Block LLC Properties at three sixty-nine and three seventy-one Main Street. Um, with me tonight is Dan Martinez, who was architect. Uh, we're going to be really focusing on on. Uh, those aspects uh or that aspect of the project pursuant to some requests that the board had at the last meeting. Just a quick update on the uh easement. Um, as we discussed, the town of Wakefield has asked my client to cooperate to provide an easement across the property. Uh, for electrical purposes, number one, and also to provide access to the rear of the uh cultural um. Building on Alvin Street that's owned by the town, and we're trying to work cooperatively in that regard. We had a couple of more meetings with Bill Renault, town engineer. And I think we'll come to um a resolution for everybody in a good way on that, uh, but we're still working through that. Um, and also, you are also still waiting uh for a memo for P A C, and I've talked to Bill Renault about that, and that should be forthcoming. But what had happened at the last meeting. Um, the the board had asked for some um more information uh on architecture. Uh, in particular on the uh exterior, Greg had brought up a good point that this project. Is in essence, it will be one building because they're connected, but we have the original. Um, Santander Bank Building. Which is staying. And is going to house the restaurant in in some of the units, and then the new building. Uh, which will be connected by a connector, which will in essence make it one building. It's all going to be merged in one lot. That's all part of our application. Um, so what Greg had pointed out and asked was, you know, what's going to happen to the exterior of the existing bank building? Because we've been focusing so hard on the the new building out back. Um, so um, um, Daniel had an opportunity to to look at that, and he's going to present a little bit about that, and. I I think at the end of the day, what our position on that is going to be is is that there's really going to be. Um, minimal alterations to that building. Um, we actually anticipate even keeping the lockup window. Uh, in place, um, even though it won't be used, it's just kind of something that's always been there, uh, kind of an historical part of the building. Um, and um, some of the windows will have to be removed in the back and infilled. Uh, we know that now at this point, and Daniel will talk to you about that. Um, but as we finally design for the restaurant, I think it's probably going to require that we come back. Hopefully, it would be a minor modification at that time that would be for you to determine. Uh, but I think we're just going to be too early in the process, but but I think we can kind of commit that. There's certainly not going to be significant or wholesale changes to that building and and uh Daniel can touch on that. Um, as he goes through um his presentation tonight. Uh, I also want to point out that we delivered materials uh to the building department, so they're down there if you want to go down and see them. Um, as it pertains to the building, you had asked us to do that, and that has been accomplished. So if I may, uh, Daniel, are you here with me?
Yes, I'm here.
Wait, could you take over your screen? Would that be okay?
Absolutely. Oh. Uh, perfect, let me bring it up. Uh, so good evening, everyone. Uh, good to see you again. Um, Daniel Martinez from Calto Design. And I'll walk you through kind of the latest changes. Uh, as you guys know, this is a three-story building. Uh, new construction with an open garage. We have a total of twenty units uh with uh, you know. Some units on the new uh on the existing building. Uh, this is the the sign that we worked with the board to to get at, uh, you know, uh, after a few iterations. And basically, uh, just to recap some of the comments we heard from the last meeting was, uh. The board wanted to see a section through the connector to understand how the floor-to-floor heights relate in the existing building and the proposed building. Uh, the board also asked to see more information on the layout of the units at the bank building to assure um. To understand, you know, how the exterior would be modified. Uh, they also requested a physical material board uh and lighting cut sheets for exterior lighting fixtures. And to locate mailboxes and add residential interior door for uh package room access. Uh, so again, uh, this is our project, and here uh we're showing an update to. The connector, uh, it did get a little bit bigger. Um. So basically, we're we're showing that we're accommodating uh ADA uh compliant. It's uh ramp. And we have uh two one height almost uh going from the existing um. The existing floor height at the third floor on the bank building to the proposed new building. Uh, so basically, or or clearance height under the the connector will be twenty-one foot six. And in order to reduce the visual impact that, uh, you know, the increase uh. Massing of the connector is creating, uh, we're also proposing to increase the window sizes. Uh, to again, uh, kind of mitigate that from the the streetscape. Um. So with that, I'll walk you through um the layout of the plans. Uh, we've also updated uh. Based on the civil plan where the dumpster and the transformer is going to go. And we did a basic layout of the units. To show that uh the only windows uh or openings that will need to be infilled are located in the rear. And this is actually where the existing um fire escape is for for the bank building. Um. But aside from that, none of the windows will be affected um by the way that we are showing the the bedroom and. And live-in diving uh dining restitution on the plan. Um. So the next plan I wanted to show, uh, this is the roof plan. Uh, we haven't made any uh additional um. Changes to this. Uh, with this picture, we wanted to show, uh, you know, the existing pictures of the bank. And this is where we're planning the connector to go up here. Uh, we're also showing that, you know, uh, we haven't designed for a restaurant. But, you know, there may be an opening that needs to be modified in the rear, just just, you know, for uh back of kitchen access. Delivery access, uh, you know, another logistical aspects. Um, and then here we're showing the existing plans for the bank building, um. Just to show that here is where the fire escape is, and these are the two windows that we're planning on, uh, the two openings that we're planning on infilling. Um. So again, we have the rendering, uh, then we have the material board. And we submitted the physical samples of the brick. Uh, so we actually submitted two options, um, you know, that way the board can evaluate them both. Uh, we. We are proposing um for option A, which is schoolhouse red flash with a uh wire cut finish. Uh, but there's also red flash three one three uh from Fell House, which has um. Dark accents to it, like some of the buildings um in the neighborhood. Uh, we've also added the ceiling cladding, which was mentioned at the last meeting. Um, for for the decks that will be seen. And we've also added the lighting cut sheets, uh, which again, um, we're planning on making all the ground level. Uh, fixtures to be uh sconce, uh, you know, a modern sconce. Uh, we're planning on recess light for the decks, uh, that would be seen from the street. And then the only one, the only deck that would get a sconce uh will be this one because it doesn't have a roof on top. So we're showing the sconce here to the right, and that's uh, and that's just to keep the. The coherence of the lighting fixtures, um, you know, consistent into the sign. Um, here's the renderings of the building from the rear. Um, this is the perspective from the top. And these are the several plants, um, so just to show that we also did address. Uh, the package room. Door here. Uh, we're also showing the mailboxes here. Um. So yes, I I I think this is all the the new material that that we have to present. Uh, based on the comments from the board. Um. I'd like to turn it over to you in case uh you guys have comments or questions.
Hey, thank you, board members.
Question, Dave. I know on other projects, so so Brian. I think that you said that easement. For the. Or not for the town, but it's for the transformer essentially, right?
Yeah, it's going to be two, Greg.
Yes.
Dan, Daniel, can you go to the site plan for Greg?
Yes, should I go to the civil one or?
That one right there, if you blow that up, go back.
Sure.
The one you had. There, you just blow that up. That's fine, okay. So actually, no, I think you gotta go to another one that shows the transformers.
Got it.
Yeah, that's a good one. Okay, perfect.
So I guess my question. Is, so the transformers, I I know in other projects we've we've asked about basic or or the. Maybe we haven't asked about it, but people, the T P W, whatever, town engineer, has had comments about. Clearance. Under certain things to get to the transformers in case they need to crane them out, is that? With lowering the the connector bridge. Have they sort of cleared that yet or anything or?
Yeah, we're fine with the light department.
Okay, all right.
Yep, we've talked to them. They're happy to get what they're getting.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, so, you know.
Yeah. Take the good with the bad.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I'd like to make a comment on the brick. Basically, I would go for the Glengarry, which has more of a flash. As opposed to one that's more or more monolithic. Because I think that's more appropriate to the town, quite frankly, and to the area.
Is that the one we, is that I prefer, Jim, or you like the other one?
That's um. It's uh, it would be, it would be option B, basically. From what's downtown hall.
Got it.
Right, more of a water struck, isn't it, Jim?
Uh, yeah, it is. It it's, it's still wire cut, but it's more like a water struck. It's less um. Like the the other one basically is almost like a sta- a sand brick basically, but it's still, they're both wire cut.
And are we planning on this being a full brick or half brick?
The this will be thin brick.
So again, in cases like this, we can, you know, move forward, but you'd also have to spec a grout color, which I don't think you've done yet.
Yeah, it is. It's on the board. It's on the board.
Was it on the board? Okay.
Yeah.
We specified Alpine White.
Which is um. Which is um sort of close to, you see the stucco material. It's sort of close to the stucco in color. It's a little whiter than a stucco, but still.
So option B, is that recommendation and and team's okay with going with that?
I like B.
That would be my preference.
I would rather have real brick, but yes. That was my only comment when I saw it. I don't care much for the fake brick, but.
It is real brick, Joe. It's just thin real brick.
It's, yeah, but it's not, you know, it's.
Nobody uses thick brick anymore.
Yeah.
Okay.
Never mind.
Any other comments, questions on the materials or the updates that uh presented?
I'm also, just to make a comment, I'm also fine with what was presented in his downtown hall. I think I've. The same materials, but in front of us right now, I sent everybody copies of. The photograph of the stuff that's downtown hall.
I I guess my comment, Mr. Chairman, would be after seeing the presentation tonight and seeing the boards and. Understanding where we're at is, you know, until we get the easement cleared up. Uh, and straightened out, and until we get T A C. And the other things that we're looking for. That were kind of there. In my opinion. As far as presentation or questions I have anyway.
Yeah, there were several punch listings that. The updates we discussed, yeah, lighting.
We, I mean, very well may have, and I'm just. Getting to be Chip's age. Uh, did we do mechanicals on the roof and 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 I assume we're reserving signage for for later? I know we talked about the entrance, but I don't know if we actually talked about signage or. I don't remember mechanicals, but maybe we did.
Uh, mechanical tests and if they can be seen from the street.
Yeah, kind of placement on the roof or or really even like, um, I guess even beyond mechanicals, like any penetrations, any vent. The side of the building, things like that.
What you may see is only the elevator by the time you're through. And yet.
Yeah, but I don't think the team has presented it.
Right, but everything's going to the roof. We're not going to see.
Kitchen vents, all that type, but I think Greg's to Greg's point. You know, we've gotten a couple buildings every now and then that. They stick something out the wall by a. You know, that, oh, that's the bathroom vent or whatever. So the question is, have all those ventings been vetted?
Uh, well, we have a five-foot parapet which will completely hide our A C condensers. Uh, I don't expect any penetrations to go beyond that. So, um, you know, I I don't think they will be visible from the streetscape.
On the sides of the building, and if there will be that they're already on the plans or or on the elevations.
Uh, well, we haven't got an M E P, but you know, they can be vented, uh. To not be on the streetscape, obviously, to not be vented to the streetscape.
There, there, there are only two floors, so they should go, they should be able to go right to the roof.
Understood, but we've seen two floors over in, was it Paul Street that they went through the side of the building too, so.
No, I I think you're absolutely correct, but it's possible, given only two floors, to do it right to the roof. The same, this same particularly for the 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 old building, basically.
So tonight, just to just make sure we. Have actually talked about it at some point.
I think the other, the other point, basically, we haven't discussed, we've seen the lighting. But what's the lighting? At night in the garage? You know, is it is is it motion sensitive? So that certain lights are turned off, so it doesn't, it doesn't look like it's the building's hovering in the middle of the night?
Uh, that that could be something that can be worked into it. Uh, we just specified, uh. You know, the these type of lights, uh, utility lights. But that's something that can be included. If uh, does the board have a certain preference to, again, motion sensors that. You know, um. Are off most of the time or?
That's, that's generally what we've done is basically had motion sensors, so. The e- the exit ways basically are lit. Wherever they are, but when a car comes in. Basically, or someone's walking around, yes, the lights come on. It's not, you know, this fluorescent tube or whatever it is. Isn't a great looking light, quite frankly. Hopefully, there's something better out there, but. Um. Um, and at the same time. Um, you know, you're going to have kids walking through here. I would hate them to go through here with a baseball bat or something like that. Cause some damage.
Un- understood. Um, yes, we can, we can work on that.
Yeah, I mean, I think a lot of this stuff usually ends up at the O and M plan.
Yeah, but they're all good points. Um, so if I could just add, so, uh, Daniel, has it been given thought? I think, I think, Tanya, we talked about this on the ability to vent the restaurant um through the through the building.
Uh, to vent the restaurant through the building, um. You mean through at at the old bank building?
Yeah, the old bank building, just because that always, that always, you know, that's something we should discuss because that becomes a a contentious issue with the board.
Yeah, we're not going to stick a stainless steel. Yeah, we're not gonna stick a stainless steel vent up the side of a building.
No, of course, and, uh, you know, that's, that's something that can be done with a shaft, uh, with a shaft enclosure. Uh, all the way to the roof, uh, it would just go from, you know, the, the, the first floor all the way up.
Right, I think we're gonna want to.
As, you know, your floor plans didn't show that.
Yes, we, I mean, we haven't designed for the restaurant. We've designed the, the residential portion, but we haven't designed a restaurant yet.
Right, there should be, there should be, the point is, there should be room to do that, right? Um, Daniel?
Yes, there, there should be room to do that.
No, no.
There will be room.
Yeah.
Yes, there, there will be room for that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, anything else that we advance?
Yes.
Okay, Joe.
Um, so Brian's indicated that the, the, um. Uh, the teller window on the side that hasn't been used for a thousand years is gonna stay. And it's basically taking air rights off the sidewalk and making, and narrowing the sidewalk. For whoever's walking up or down there. In this sidewalk, even though to this time has not been very busy. Now it's going to be busy, basically. So I would like to see the damn thing go, period.
We, are we talking about this big window here?
No, the, the, the teller, going down the middle of the building. No, the old building.
The old teller window.
The old, right there.
This one?
Yeah.
I thought it was gonna be for takeout.
Well, if it's gonna be a classy restaurant, I'm not sure they do takeout. Except through the, except through the lobby.
Well, uh, again, this is something that can be worked, uh, on, uh, you know, uh, and we can discuss, uh. You know, what makes the most sense seems to replace it with the windows that, uh, are in the facade and, and just kind of create a consistent facade. Um, but again, that, that's something that we can present, um, moving forward.
Well, I, I'd be willing to say that once you've got, that this was, this is gonna go, period. And that we keep it for the moment until you actually have a restaurateur. And a plan, basically, so we can see how this might work into the plan, because it could be. That maybe this is the entrance to the restaurant, because it's probably the floor inside is close to that elevation. Because you can't do it from Main Street very easily, because you got a handicap issue basically there, unless you would make some sort of ramping system. That maybe goes through or on the side of the building where the, uh, San D'Or tear, uh, sign is on that far end. Go through there, basically, in the lobby, but you know, that's, that's all gonna be planned out, so. I would just like to see that thing go at some point in this process.
Got it. I'll ma- I'll make a note of it, so we can address that.
Anything else, board members? Okay. So Brian, you said there's still some correspondence we, we need to see.
You do, yeah.
Engineering, TAC, um, is it, if, if other board members feel the same way that we're kind of getting close to the end on this? Um, is it time to maybe draft an on and plan and? The other stuff, maybe, I don't know, draft conditions or start to look at that kind of thing?
I'd like to, I was gonna ask if I could do that, so.
Board members, seems like might be the time to at least get them drafted and start looking.
Absolutely.
Okay. Green light, Brian.
Okay.
Anything else, board members, for tonight? Alright, alright. Alright, let, let's open up the public testimony. If anyone has a comment or question on the information we've heard tonight, please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. Seeing none, we'll close it to public testimony for the evening. So two weeks, Brian?
That'd be great, and your extension's good till June thirtieth on this, so you have plenty of time.
Brian, do you really think you'll have the easement stuff squared away in two weeks?
I think, I think there's a good chance we will, Chip. Yeah, I had a me, I had a, um, uh, correspondence with Bill, and I want, I think we're, we're pretty close.
Okay, so my, my only comment, Brian, as you usually do, is that if there's any of the three things we talked about tonight that aren't. Ready to go, just continue it.
Understood, yeah. Thank you. Appreciate that.
So on that note, I move that we continue this to May tenth.
Seconded.
Thank you, any discussion? Regular voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Yep.
And I vote yes. Alright, thanks for the updates tonight. We'll talk to you in a couple of weeks.
Perfect, thank you very much for your time. Have a great night.
You too, thank you. Okay, next continued hearing, twenty-three die sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, Mira LLC and Sky Group Investments LLC at One Autobahn Road.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, Tony McGrail here on behalf of Mira LLC and Sky Group Investments LLC. Uh, with me tonight again is Anthony, Anthony Goya, uh, from, um, iFly. John Ogrin is here from Hayes Engineering. And, um, I shook, um. Uh, uh, Ashok Patel is here from, um, he is actually the owner of the hotel. Um, and, uh, he is here as, as well. Um, to, uh, provide some, you know, information or testimony if it's needed from the board. So what, what we have tonight, we've, um. Um, is the board had requested, we did some more homework and, on this and, and did some, uh, produce some more plans. We've. We've revised our architectural plans and our signage plans, which I'd like to share, because I think Anthony at the last. Uh, meeting had told you that we were gonna get away from a concrete building. So now we, we wanna present the building that we wanna build. It needs to be refined a little bit more, uh, to, to, if, if the building, that I'm gonna show you that we submitted won't change, but it was. For a New Jersey project, so it's gonna, it's gonna get revised for Wakefield to have the signage on the right sides as far as the, uh, elevations go. Um, and the other thing that I, it, uh, is exciting, we have some renderings, the board had asked for some renderings of this project. Uh, from different angles in relation to the hotel and the highway, et cetera, so we're gonna present those, um. They're hot off the press and, and they're pretty impressive. And then I wanna talk to you a little bit about the parking requirements to just try to advance that. So, um, if I may, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna. Share my screen on.
Sure.
Thank you. And I'm gonna move on some of this stuff. Expeditiously, because I, I realize the time, but this is now, uh, the coloring. Uh, Anthony, are you here with me?
Yes, I'm here.
Great, thank you. So this is now the coloring and the signage. Um, you know, before we had gray and, and you're gonna see this in the rendering, how it plays out. Um, and how the signage plays out and how it will be located on this building and the renderings. I'm not gonna bore you with all the interior stuff. I think you've seen that three times now. Um. But this is, you know, this is really the, the, you know, the coloring and the, and the material of the building. And just real quickly. Uh, Anthony, could you talk about the material?
Sure, and, and so this. This structure on, on screen is, um, it's, as of now, I mean, you'll see it more clearly in the renderings. It's gonna be kind of a, it's a metallic siding material. Um, you know, we've gone with a more utility area and kind of, uh, kind of industrial style look to reflect kind of the core element of the machine within. Um, you know, we've tried more flowery expressions and particular designs in other districts, and they end up aging pretty terribly. Um, a lot of this was, you know, with effort gone into this building design, along with this generation of tunnel, is to really strip out a lot of the fluff. Get kind of the core essence of the, um, the experience and machine. So as I showed you last week in the, or I think it was last, yeah, last, not last week. Last press, the last meeting, um, in the presentation, you know, this building is the. Most elegant and efficient kind of just shell or skin on top of, you know, to accommodate the machine underneath. Every, you know. Every shape on here is intentional and purpose-built, as it just, uh, is the most, um, you know. Kind of the minimal expression of, of a building on top of what we, you know, we have is, is more of a machine, so. Um, yeah, it's the simple elements, metals, glass. Um, we're happy to work with, uh, you know, our landscaping to bring us. As one of our plans, we're with the conservation committee, is to restore pervious coverage and what is currently concrete and containers. And so, you know, landscaping will be an important part of our plan, and it'll allow the more natural element of the surrounding area to, to pop against the contrast. Of the, you know, the simple mechanical element of our structure. And we work primarily with colors and signage to bring kind of the aesthetic and signature. Stylistic element to, uh, iFly, you know, um, brand in the area. So this is the, you know, a rendering of the prototype building.
This is a rendering on our site.
Yep, on site specific, yes.
So this is if you're in the parking lot facing the, the, facing the building going in, and this sign is on the right where my, uh, cursor is. Is facing the highway, correct, Anthony?
Correct, yes.
Yeah. So that's one.
Is the banding that you see in here actually what's there?
It, it will be, and it's, I mean, some of these, some of the, it's the, this facade, the striation, so that it doesn't have to necessarily be this color. The intent is to be blue and the banding it to add a bit of breakup from the, the monolithic blue, which would otherwise be solid. Um, so we know, we have, we can make the banding more solid, we can make it more random. Um, but the nature of the striping is a direct expression of the facade system itself.
No, I, I, I like that, because, but I was just looking at my other computer, basically, and, and it was a monolithic color without the banding, so.
We've, uh, yeah, we've recently added the banding, um, as you know, the monolithic color, right, so that. The drawings represent the prototype, which is the simplest package of this building design. And it's meant to allow certain colorful expression, um, with the material that we're choosing to build with. Uh, so it can be, we can kind of accommodate some of the local, um, design vernacular or, or, or desire for aesthetics. Um, and so what, what's the, the rendering reflects is our, you know, our latest kind of, um. Uh, modulation, if you will, of that core prototype.
No, I, I, I like it because it does break it up. Even here, basically, it turns the corner, which is nice as well.
Correct, yeah, that was our intention, and it's something that, you know, again, we've been, you know, Boston will be one of the first, um. Of the, you know, I think after Edison, New Jersey and Qatar, Boston will be one of the first, um. You know, of this particular building aesthetic. So we are, a- as, as you can see, you know, where, where it's evolving as we are progressing through. These types of entitlements phases, and we're finding new ways to bring, bring character to it.
Are, is the other side similarly banded?
Um, so the backside, so as you can see, here we can go, we have all views from all around.
I'm gonna bring him up, I'll bring him up. Let me just go through these one at a time. So this is enough, this is the, uh, this is the off-ramp of one twenty-eight. You can see it, you can kind of see the hotel on the left-hand side. So, let me, uh, I think I can just keep changing this.
This is down where the containers are, right?
Correct.
Yes.
So this, this doesn't show any great variation from the parking lot at the hotel down.
You can kind of see Brian in, in some of the later renders.
Hold on, here they come.
Yep.
So, this is, this is coming down the ramp.
But again, I think this is a lot lower than it's showing.
Well, John might be able to, Johnny, are you there, John Ogrin?
Yeah, I am here.
You hear what Mr. Todd Bell's saying here?
Um, as far as the grate, the front of the building, um, you know, is basically at the, the parking lot elevation. Um, it does go down behind the building, probably about, I'd say, three to four feet. Kind of the backside of where all those containers are. So it does, it is graded off from the, from the rear of the building.
But John, even where those containers are today. Are, is lower than the main parking lot at the hotel.
That's.
It's showing it pretty even, and this is showing. The roadway being almost even, so I'm just saying it.
Oh.
It's sunk in considerably.
Mr. Chirbel, yes, I mean. Yeah, to speak to that, Mr. Chirbel, um, we, we, uh, I mean, these are, these renderings, um, are an approximation. They're not, they're by no means the final architectural renderings. We understand that the ZBA process is kind of iterative and step by step, so as we introduce the aesthetic of our building. Um, and generally, you know, get a lit, you know, test the, uh, waters with the overall sense of approval and, and the desires of the board members. And what everybody, you know, everybody feels, wanna take in all of your perspectives into consideration. So these initial renderings are just to kind of get a feeling. Um, and then as we step through the design review process with everyone here, we'll kind of crank out a more set package of final renders. Um, as we confirm and lock in various aesthetic choices. And those will be built on the topography and the topology of the land. Um, but we, you know, to get these generated in two weeks, so as to kind of create a representation and the initial impression, um. We didn't have the, our, our designer didn't have the bandwidth to go run a full topology input in their software.
Yeah, and then, but this kind of gives an idea with the massing of the hotel. I think the board wanted to see that too.
There's quite a bit of separation.
Yeah. And I got a couple more.
We tried to use, you know, um, kind of a, a quick blend of Google Maps. To get a, a more, a little bit more accurate of representation of what it could look like in situ from the territory as is. However, Google Maps is not picture, picture perfect, so you'll see that as he, Brian pulls up the next few.
Hopefully this helps.
So this, this building looks like it's approximately. Um, maybe the same height as the lower building in the hotel?
It's fifty-four feet, uh, at the top, to the top of the, um, the high parapet.
Alright, so it's probably forty feet roof on the other, on the other building, since it's about three feet, uh, three stories, I guess, it looks like.
Yeah, approximately.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, Brian, do you have something from the back, so you can see what it looks like when you're on Southbound on one twenty-eight?
Yeah, let me see, Tom, I got two more left, maybe. Uh, this, this might do it. This the one you want, Tom?
Yeah.
Chip, this gives you a better idea of the topography, I think.
Not perfect, but.
Better, yeah.
No, that's a, a- and again, Brian, again, it, it is better, but I think it's important to know, like. With, with, when you get John Ogrin to start, to putting a posi- putting the building on a site plan. What are our elevation and grade differential? Because I think from the off-ramp down to the entrance of this building. I'm gonna guess it's probably ten or twelve feet. I mean, those, those containers set right now below the ramp.
Mm-hmm.
Which, which means, Chip, that probably.
Less of the building, I mean, I'm fine.
Well, I think also we'll, the roof of this may in fact match the roof of the other building.
Or come, or come close.
Yeah, because it's sit down, it's sitting down in that hollow. I think it looks great.
I think it's cool. Right, like I said, this doesn't have to relate to anything.
No, it's. It's far enough away. And it's overpowered by the hotel, really, in a way.
I have a, I have a question on, is the signage on the side of the building, um, the logo and the letters are all lit?
It will be backlit internally. Yes, they won't be, though, we don't have any plans for uplighting. We do, the signage is internally lit.
Is that, it, for me, it seems like it's a little too big for the proportion of the, the side of the building. Is there a way like you can do like a nighttime rendering of how that signage looks like from the highway? Like going down the ramp?
Hold on, just, I'm gonna get you a shot of this so you can see it. Hold on, this might help you as you talk about it. There you go. That, that the one you're talking about?
Yeah, it, it seems a little, little too big when it's like all the logos and the letters are all backlit.
Okay, I will take that into consideration. We will certainly, um, speak with our designer about developing, uh, some kind of night. Nighttime rendering, simulate the lighting, so that you get a better feel for how it might look, um, in proportion to the highway and the rest of the buildings and. Um, in proportion to the highway and the rest of the buildings and, and the experience from the average driver, for sure.
I mean, it may be that the body, the flying body, the red is not lit, but the, the body is lit and the, and the iFly is lit, maybe something like that.
Yes, the red will be a softer glow, and then obviously the, the white will, will pop out brighter. Um, that's, that tends to be. The, um, the ex- the experience, what one, what's, what's visible at night, um, obviously the red will consume more of the light and kind of, um, reduce the brightness, but, um. I don't know if we have a.
These, are these, are these the signs that you have in New Jersey right now?
Um. I'm trying, I don't know in Paramus what our sun, it just looks like it might be a bit different, um.
Just wondering if you can take some photos too, or maybe one that you have like this.
Let me see.
Field trip to Saudi.
And also, it, it's the expectation that they'd be off when the building is closed, so they're not just beaming all night.
Yeah, we, we're certainly happy to, um, you know, work with y'all on, on that kind of limitation. And, um, those parameters of, you know, when we're operating and when we're, when our buildings, um, when the lighting is and when it's not on.
Yeah, just, you know, light pollution, right? You're coming off the highway, you, you know, but. Anyway, people will see the building, but it just, uh, probably don't need the, the beacon light going all night if it's, it's closed. So just a thought, I think.
But I agree on the sizing. Maybe we should look at, you know, downsizing, but just to see, you know, several different scales for the side of the building, this being the maximum scale.
Yeah. Okay.
It's gonna have to be a whole signage exercise anyway.
Sure.
Okay, so we, we can park it, but good comments, okay?
Yep, good, we've got it, good comments.
Okay, what else, Brian? What's part of the presentation package?
Okay, let me just, uh, so those are, and I will send you those, uh, elevations for your, for your, for the record, I'll email those in. Uh, the renderings, I mean.
Brian, quickly, did we talk about the, um, sound pollution on this with the fans going?
Yeah, I think we did, I mean.
We did way back, right?
Yeah, we did.
And, and Joseph, I'm happy to speak to that a little bit. I mean, we, I think that's the point that was, uh, that I brought up last time. Is when we've conducted, uh, son acoustic measurements of both interior and exterior of the facility, um. We took measurements directly at, so part of our machine, as I explained, I think I explained still, um, there, there's a thing called the makeup air, which is effectively like the. It's the air intake and output from our, so it's the point that's directly connected to the flow path. Of our machine to the ambient air reservoir, which is the exterior to the building. And that's how when we ramp up and ramp down the wind tunnel, it's, it effectively breathes in and breathes out. So that would be the point of the highest exposure to any sound created by the wind tunnel itself, um, exterior to the building. And we've taken measurements right at that makeup air, um, vent. And there you, the noise levels do not exceed even normal highway noise. You can't.
Yeah, I was gonna say, but it's, it's so close to the highway, you probably wouldn't even hear it with trucks blowing.
Yeah, they, yeah, over normal air conditioning chillers and things like that, you can't even hear it.
Appreciate that, thank you.
No problem.
Right, so, so, um, the, the only other thing I, um, wanted to cover tonight was the parking aspects of this. And John, can you, John, can you bring up the, uh, site plan with the parking tables? Is that something you can do, or do you want me to do it?
No, I can do that.
Could you? Cause I want to talk about it a little bit. Those John is doing that, one of the things that we've, um, we've asked for i- is part of our relief is, is relief on the parking requirements. And, um, so we have the table and, and it's, it's quite an extensive calculation when you look at all the mixed uses that are going on on this property. Um, and the thing to really focus on first is the hotel. So the hotel. Under our parking cable, um, it, the requirement is one space per two employees in the maximum work shift. Plus one per guest room, plus one per two hundred square feet of function rooms, plus one per three seats in a restaurant. So we have a maximum forty employees, so that would be twenty divided by two. We have two hundred and seventy-seven guest rooms, so you need one per guest room. We have a thirteen thousand five hundred and ninety-one square foot function room, so, uh, divided by two hundred, uh. Uh, two hundred square feet in that calculation. Then we have a one hundred, uh, six, uh, uh, seat restaurant divided by three. So. When you factor all those in, the, the hotel itself is currently required to have four hundred parking spaces. The hotel has been here forever, as you know. We only have two hundred and sixty-one there today, John counted them. Uh, Ashook is here, I had Ashook here because he is the owner of the hotel and runs the hotel. They've never had parking problems here. Um, so, um. You factor in how, how the world has changed, you know, and you look at our zoning bylaw requirements for a hotel, for example. Um, you know, back when, when those went into effect, you had, people would, would come in from Boston, they would rent cars at airports. Um, they don't do that anymore. Um, they either take a shuttle, they take Uber, they take buses. Um, so, y- you know, the whole dynamic has changed. Um, Ashook, we've talked about this, a, a lot of his, uh, business at the hotel is from buses. Groups that come in, uh, for, for sightseeing in Boston or for foliage season. Um, and they all come in in buses, um, so they don't have cars. Uh, the hotel has a, has a shuttle service that they provide. Uh, people that want to go to Boston, uh, this is really interesting because we've talked about shuttles with two hundred, four hundred quan of power. The hotel, uh, runs a, a shuttle service and they run a shuttle service to the, um, Wakefield train station. So guests that are staying there that want to go to Boston, they, they take the train in and then they trick it back out and get the shuttle. Um, and then also, um, the old Boston Sports Club is across the street. Um, which is now the Mass Police Training Center is, has, has a related ownership group of the hotel. So as Ashook told me, if they're, you know, if one time a year, like there's a Christmas event that they have an issue with. Parking, they, they have, uh, they'll use, um, valet and they just put a ton, you know, they'll put cars over there. So they have. They have provisions for overflow parking. So there's no issues with that. If on a, on a service system, you know, we, the building inspector, as far as iFly goes. Has classified us as a service establishment. So based on square footage, uh, the requirement would be thirty-six spaces. Um, we're adding to the two sixty-one where all those containers are fifteen spaces. So we're gonna go from two sixty-one to, to, uh, two seventy-six. Um, uh, Ashook at the hotel and Anthony through iFly. Um, with the, with the mixed use that is going on there, they're very confident that there'll be enough parking spaces. Um, this is not like a place where people just show up and, oh, look, you know, a hundred people showed up on a Saturday. Uh, you know, I think we talked a little bit about this, you have to have an appointment, you, you, you have to. You have to kind of book this, uh, book your time at iFly. So, so they're very confident that, um. That these, uh, spaces that we're gonna provide, two seventy-six will work very well. Um, it would be, it, it would be a shame to take up open space and try to squeeze more parking spaces in there when they're not needed.
Just, uh, Brian, uh, just wanted to just comment on something real quick.
Yeah, introduce yourself, Ashook, if you would.
Yeah, um, Ashook Patel, I, I represent the ownership group of the hotel and also the ownership group of the Boston Sports Club, the currently the Police Academy Building. So part of, uh, part of what, uh, the parking calculation, part of what the table is sort of. Over calculating is, is the fact that even let's say like employees, for example. The worst part of which is the nighttime, let's say, we only have on average about three people in the building that are working. Maximum amount of employees in the hotel are gonna be in the daytime and there's no guests there. So even that calculation, by the, by, by the way the zoning law reads, let's say we need one, you know, a, 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 one parking for every two employees. Even that is over calculated when you, when you talk about it, because in reality, we never have twenty people working at night, for example. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, you know, sure. Can you confirm the board, you've never had parking issues with the two?
Never had an issue with parking, never. Um, same thing with the restaurant, Brian. So we have a hotel restaurant that is primarily catering to hotel guests. So I know there's a parking requirement for number of seats versus number of parkings in the restaurant. I, I don't remember the last time that anybody pulled off the speed and came to a hotel restaurant worse than going to Market Street. I mean, the hotel restaurant is sort of an, sort of an amenity for the guest only. If they, if they come in, they don't feel like driving again or, or, or going somewhere, they can eat at the hotel restaurant, but we now, we seldom, never have people come in from the street eating at the restaurant. So we're not generating additional parking needs for the restaurant seats that we have. So all those matrix, I think, on the, on the zoning side. Although they're intended to be good calculations in, in practicality, they never sort of come into use, basically, you see what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm, well, that's a good point. So I mean, the restaurant alone would require thirty-five parking spaces and, and basically what Ashook is saying, the public really doesn't go there.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have any public that goes to our hotel restaurant. They all, they all go to Market Street and other, other places, so.
Okay. So we just wanted to present those to you and what our thoughts were in that regard.
Okay. Every city, I, and, and, and we do a lot of, a lot of development work, guys, and I can tell you, every town. In, in, in the suburbs have parking requirements that are probably from the sixties, seventies, you know, some of them eighties. And they're all over parking all the time. I mean, I see park, empty parking lots everywhere when we do development work and. I, I, I try to argue with the guys and tell them, hey, boards. Let's look at something where we have less pavement in our, so it's, it's better for us, you know, but it is what it is.
Okay. Any questions on that, board members?
Chairman.
Yes.
The, so here's my. Take on the parking. So I, I'm fine with the fact that they may not need this many parking. I'd like to hear the commitment that there'll be no more crap in the park. To me, the containers look like hell.
Yeah.
And the parking spaces look like hell in the front of the restaurant, you know, I'm glad the owner's here, because I'll tell you. Its space looks like hell with all those containers. So I'd be fine with thinking about lowering the amount and that there'd be no. Structures or no containers or nothing other than appropriate parking spaces for all the parking. That everything else has to go away.
So I, I do appreciate your sentiments, or I, I, we started the renovation on the hotel and we got into COVID. Um, we were severely impacted by, by the COVID pandemic, uh, being a hotel and. We had to abandon the, the renovation project in the middle of it because of COVID shutdown and, and, and availability of cash flow. So our intention was never there to leave these containers for as long as they've been there. And we are making arrangements to get them emptied out. Um, so I do understand, I mean, I don't have any more hotels where we have containers laying around. Forever, um, this was a very unique situation where we were caught in the, in the middle of it with COVID and, and been full swing. And, uh, we could not continue the renovation because we just didn't have the financial. Withall to do it at the time when COVID was rampant, basically.
So in summary, Ashook, you, you agree with Mr. Todd Bell, and, um, there's no issue. Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and again, on to, to, um, one step further on that one, once the containers are gone, again, the, the full intent of our development of this piece of, piece of the property is. Not only to remove the containers or be part of that and reclaim it for the building, it's something more proactive and productive, but. Also to take all that pavement out and bring it back to fertile green space along the edge of the Saugus River, so, um. It'll be even less pavement behind the building and then purely parking and utility in front of the building.
Yeah, and then the only other question I had, Mr. Chairman, in regards to this whole complex as a whole. Was a number of years ago, uh, the hotel came in front of us. For a, I believe it was either a special permit or a variance for the creation or redoing of their. Um. Pool. That I don't think ever came to fruition. Is there any plans of doing anything with that? Just so we understand the whole.
That special permit has lapsed.
No, I know it has, but is there, you know, as we talk about one thing, let's talk about the whole site. Is that ever gonna come back?
We don't, we don't intend to build the pool as it was designed like fifteen years ago. No, we don't intend to build that pool.
Was it that long ago?
Yeah, fifteen years, at least, at least.
That's a scary thought, okay.
You have, you have a very sharp memory.
I'm not really.
We, we. Chip, you and I were only freshmen on this class.
I just want to make sure we think.
I think you were in elementary school, actually.
We all hold on to this.
We think about, you know, the site as a whole, and I, that was the only reason for that question.
Yeah. Any other new material to present, Brian?
No, um. Let me just see here, hold on. I had any other questions? No, that's what we have for tonight, um. And we, and John, can you tell the board, we're gonna be at the Conservation Commission on May second?
Yes, correct. We have our, our first meeting with them on May second.
Yeah.
Okay, so next time with us, landscaping.
I think, I think, Anthony, I think what should happen here at this point, we, we've got some homework assignments on the signs. Okay, we, you know, we presented parking. There's not a lot more for, you know, I don't think for us to present to the board, and obviously we're gonna have to do some, you know, more detailed renderings. We have a night. The night, uh, experience that, uh, Kasumi has requested. So we've got some stuff on that, but. I think we should continue, uh, we should miss the next meeting, uh, which is only two weeks away. Because we need to get going with conservation and allow them to catch up a little bit.
That makes sense to me. I, I think that, that, that sounds like it'll give us a month.
Yeah, I want to waste the board's time presenting little bits and pieces. Their agenda is very busy and. And we need to, and we need to get, we need to get going with conservation to see where they're gonna stand on some of these things.
Yeah, and respect to the meeting efficiency and overall productivity of this process. I'm, I'm happy to. Give a month of breathing room to get us to the conservation committee, like you said, and then that'll allow us to go do our homework on, on our side.
Okay, yeah. Or if there's nothing else, then we can open up the public testimony. If anyone in the public has a question or a comment, please raise your hand at this time at the, in the Zoom meeting. Seeing no hands, we'll close up the public testimony for the evening. All right, so, um. We have some homework, um, and we'll continue to, uh, five twenty, May twenty-fourth.
Yeah, and you, I think, uh, we should talk about an extension right now. We're good till six one, so what would you like, Mr. Chair?
Well, it sounds like we've got probably a couple more meetings, right? At least, so want to go out to end it, um.
End of July, I just want to do, yeah, just get through fourth of July and not deal with that, because you're gonna be going into your summer schedule also.
Right, okay, so.
My suggestion would be August.
Yeah, I think it might, Chip, uh, uh, just to be safe, just to do it, yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, we've got two meetings in the summer, so I'd go after the second August meeting.
And, and Anthony, don't get scared by that. I mean, basically what happens is the board has a time limit to render a decision and it messes everything up if that expires without it being continued, so. The board always works expeditiously, but they just don't want to get into a situation that they allow it to lapse, which will create a nightmare for you. And for, and for the board.
Respect the process.
Yeah, so, so I think that's a good suggestion, uh, Chip, to just do it till the end, to the end of the summer, just so we don't have to worry about it.
So I will continue this here until May twenty-fourth and accept the petitioners' agreement to move their date for. Till August thirtieth for concluding.
Decided.
Yep. Hey, this question on the, um, compound motion. Our regular voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yep.
And I vote yes. All right, thanks for the updates. We'll see you, uh, later in May.
Yeah, thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for your time, thank you.
Okay, next continued hearing. Twenty-three dash seventy, seventy-one and seventy-two, A and E Realty Trust, four sixty to four sixty-six and four seventy-two Main Street. Great, thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, for the record, attorney Brian McGrail, representing the applicant. Uh, with me tonight, uh, is Peter Sandors, and I think Steve, uh, the Furrier is here from, uh, Phoenix Architects. Um, also, uh, Andre. Um, also Andrea Zitos is here. Uh, Scott Fitzpatrick is here, uh, and Rick Salvo is not, because we're not gonna be dealing with Site Civil today. Um, what we wanted to do today, this is the project at four sixty, four sixty-six and four seventy-two Main Street, the old Malice Restaurant Building on Main Street. We had the introductory uh, presentation at the last meeting. And Peter would like to take a little bit of a deeper dive uh, into the architecture and, you know, talk a little bit more about that. And the board had asked to see a brick possibility, which I think Peter's gonna show you and talk to you about a little bit on this. And um, so Peter, are you and Steve gonna take over here for a minute?
Yes, Steve is gonna bring up the um, the plans. Uh, and we'll both kind of walk you through. Just briefly, we went through the plans last time, both existing conditions and then proposed conditions on each floor. And the fact that we were doing retail on the first floor and then residential on the second floor in the far rear left two-story residential. That's kind of where we left off. Then we went through and explained um, our vision of the front facade of the building and how we thought that might look. And Steve, just stop on this slide for a moment. So here we looked at the existing conditions of facade now, and then the proposed conditions. We were showing a building um, using a hardy plank type siding with big windows and pretty elaborate cornice on the upper part to hide HVAC behind discussions. Um, mostly, I believe Chip wanted to see the building uh, in brick, and we we will show that as we go through uh, near the end. But what we also did now is we explored the right-left uh, and rear of the building. So here here we're seeing uh, the left facade, which we didn't show before, where you can now see the um, the courtyard that we're proposing, the the entry into the um, center there, which takes you into the lobby of the building uh, for the residential area and the door to the parking garage in their rear left. Uh, and then also we showed some windows on the retail up in the front. So the retail.
Yeah, I think what we started to pay attention to, Pete, I can chime in here is just yeah, es- especially when you're starting to approach the building from both sides, you're gonna start to get a glimpse of each side, even though you're gonna have the the tight alleyway on the right. And then the the two alleyway getting back to the parking garage on the left. So focusing on where we can start to implement. You know, the same detail we are in the front, the elaborate cornice with the brackets. And then obviously, as you start to get towards the back of the building, um, just looking at ways to simplify. So simplifying the banding, removing the brackets, um, because it's not gonna be exposed from the street side. So again, just trying to have that clean break as you go back towards the building.
Here is the um, this is the rear, yes, the rear of the building. Uh, sits pretty close to the parking garage that's back there. Uh, what you're seeing on the lower level of the fence uh, that vent the parking uh, right and left, and then on the upper levels, uh, the windows into the apartments. And then this is the building on the right side, again, bringing the retail uh, wrapping in a little bit because you get some view that come down Main Street. The windows in the apartments, the upper level, and then the venting in the parking below. So here we showed, as you remember, the uh, existing conditions from Main Street. Uh, and then we started to show the proposed uh, facades with different color schemes. Here was the first one. This is more uh, flat uh, rendering of the building uh, with the tan. And this now is the rendering of the building uh, with brick uh, on the upper portion with the idea that we would wrap that brick probably ten to twelve feet right and left. Uh, and then we turn in and and then go to a more hardy plank uh, style siding. So that this is what we um, this is an additional uh, rendering of facade that didn't present last. It's that's what we have at this point. Am I right, Steve, pretty much?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's everything.
Yes.
Peter, Jim was good enough to send around some old photos. Did he by chance send them to you guys as well?
He did. He sent them. Oh, he sent them to me. You, yeah, so.
Did you forward them to them?
No, but I can bring them on the screen, Chip.
Well, so so my comment was I was really appreciative because I had made the railroad station crack last time about the cornice and stuff like that.
Yeah.
What Jim's pictures really pointed out is that this is very much in keeping of an old building, which is really kind of fun to think about. So if you take that the next step, many of hit many of those buildings had curved radiuses at the top of the windows, something a little bit more ornate around the windows. You know, if you go up to One Lincoln, kind of like that building, that that had more detail to them. So I love the idea of what you're doing. I just wonder if we can take it even the next step, or if it would be appropriate to take it the next step with more detailed around the windows, both top and bottom. Um, just really trying to 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 make it look not like the Malice Building, which is about as flat and boring as possible. But really bring it back in time and have a modern, older facade. If that makes any sense.
This is an old, this is a nineteen, uh, this is nineteen oh five.
This Albion.
This is uh, three.
Albion and Maine.
Albion Maine, yeah.
The trolley tracks went all the way to stone him.
Jim, am I off base, or would this be?
No, no, like, you know, I I I you know, you're off base when you talk about the the crack, basically, on the on the on the other, but you know, but I also, when I also look at this of the brick, I could go either way in some ways. Um, and you know, this building, and Peter did it, basically, the one on Albion Street, we already approved of, where there's a little restaurant or shop on the corner and there's two floors above it, basically. It's sort of that black brick type of thing. And I would like to see us keep the scale of downtown in this sort of vernacular, basically, like this, whether it's brick or or whether it's clapboards. But to keep it that small town and leave the big part over at Frontery Street in those areas, basically. So you got this nice little compact older part of town, and then you got the more modern high-rise or mid-rise section of town uh, with housing like, and they'll feed this downtown if we make it nice.
Peter, can you let me share for a minute?
Um, I'll stop sharing.
Steve, yeah.
There you go, Jim.
Yeah, this is, this is in the fifties, basically. And so this was what the buildings, the buildings you could see, starting there. Um, the the Dunlap Building is still there. Uh, basically, but with the roof built out and the windows filled in. The next one over basically uh, is where the shoe, where the furniture store was. And then after that, I'm not sure what the building is, but those all those two got can basically combined. The next building over is um, actually still there. It's the plat- it's the stucco one.
And then hot tub where is down here, right, Jim?
Yeah, and actually, I have, I I've sent around a picture of heartsware hardware before it was hearts hardware. It was really terrible, but anyway. So this, you know, these are replacements of really houses that used to be on the side. And they're not that, they're not that um, great. So what you're trying to do is is gonna bring back, connect the rest of the the rest of the town's Main Street with this end of Main Street. And if we can get the sidewalks and some trees and some light fixtures on the street, it will be really, it will really tie the two ends together and keep it at a scale that's appropriate.
That's a great point.
Pete, I'll forward you guys those.
Okay.
You got you got the one with the uh, the one with the of hearts hardware on the corner with the
No.
It's a five and dime, basically.
No, I just have.
It's 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 like Revere Beach, really. It's terrible. Anyways, I I, you know, I could go either way, but I think the scale's right. I like the fact that we're returning on either side so that the commercial space basically has the opportunity of side windows on it. Um, it it's just, it's the right direction, and there is precedence for big brackets on the building. I mean, we got, we got, uh, we did the brackets, basically, up at um, uh, what's the building up on?
I think about Brightview.
Brightview, yes, yeah.
I'll help you.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, and and I, no, I just, I really commend Peter and Stephen for starting to do it. So I just, I just thought, could you you know, could could you add, could you take it to the next step, or would it make sense to make it a little bit more ornate?
Well, I I could say.
All that one taken down.
Uh, uh, you know, these these bays on here, I think, do something really nice. Maybe uh, when you start talking about window changes, maybe it's the center section with our two windows. Maybe they become more predominant and really center the building. I don't know, I you know, it's it's something to study, anyway.
All right, I I I think, Jim, we had looked at at those two center windows. You can see how we're breaking them with the transoms there. Those kind of anchor in the middle of the building, but but maybe there's a way we can take that detail a step further and truly anchor it.
It it may be, they may have arches over and basic shallow arches, not not really, you know, half circles, but shallow arches maybe on those to see how that works out.
Okay, so they'll look at that. All right, um, assuming I see you have your hand up.
I have, I have a uh, comments on the outside and also the inside on the first floor. I like the ex- how the exterior looks like, but to me, it seems like a little too many brackets on the roof line. So like, my eyes goes to the residential level and not so much on the retail uh, the bottom level. I'm wondering if the banding of the retail store can be a little bit forward. So it like emphasize like um, the retail stores on the door, the first floor side, and not so much on like the roof lines and the residential side. Um, so that was my exterior comment. And um, if you can go to the first floor plan uh, the middle, the stair in the middle of the building. Is the door supposed to be opening out from the stair to the lobby? Because that's the, that's the egress stair from the second floor, correct? And then it looks like there's a handicap lift um, next to the interior stair. I was wondering if that stair door and also, I don't know if that's the mechanical room on the top, like that's gonna interfere with the um, the lift, like the gate on the lift.
Good morning. I think that, I think you're right. The door would swing out.
Yeah, and then I'm just wondering, because the the handicap lift, they usually have a lift, the gates open up and close in.
Yeah.
So that might interfere with the somebody exiting from the stairs.
Maybe we'll have it flipped. Maybe we'll flip the lift and the stair. Then we can, we can figure that here a little bit, I think.
Well, yeah, it it's an elevator machine room, so it's there. There aren't gonna be, when the elevator guys are in there working on the elevator, that's when that door would be swung open full time, but other than that, it wouldn't be. So there is a conflict here. I'm not given uh, the way elevators are working today, I'm not yet sure even how big a machine room they have, basically, these days.
All right, but just something to look at. Again, we don't.
Those, yeah, those are my comments.
Okay, thank you.
I I think as far as the, as far as the band, uh, the sign band out front, I think if they, if you had, if you'll go back, and I can, I can find historic pictures again um, of the sign bands in the old buildings, they had a lot deeper trim on them. So to speak about having that stand out more, basically, I think it's just a matter of how you trim, trim it out with more a historical sort of trim, which would be several layers of trim, basically, to make it stand off more.
Yeah. All right, something to look at. Anything else? Any other part of the presentation, or was this the extent of it, Brian?
This is the, you're you're done, Pete and Steve, right?
Yes, yes, yeah.
All right, so I I think you're hearing the comments from the board headed in the right direction, some additional areas to look at.
Yeah. Um.
Uh, uh, I'm sorry to be a late add here, but um, the fact that this is being transformed is is really good. And uh, I hear what Chip's saying, but we're doing a lot of brick. How much brick is gonna be too much brick, you know? It does fit within the context there, because it's across the street. You got the middle school and the armory there, and um, you know, the David Barrett Building down is, it's got a lot of stone in it, too.
CVS is brick too, Tom.
CVS is brick. So.
Yeah, I can go.
I'm not dying on this hill. I'm just saying it's something to think about. I don't know.
Sorry to also be a late add. I agree with Tom.
So are you, Greg and Tom, are you thinking more the clapboard?
I'm exactly with Tom. I would think that that direction, but it's not a make or break. It just.
Yeah, but but for me, right, I said, transform the site is the most important thing, whether it's brick or clapboard, is, you know. I just think we're doing a lot of brick, because I did like the building we did that Jim referenced at the Corner Lake, and you know, we're doing a lot of brick. There's brick over what we just in the Kingman Project. You know, we're 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 maintaining that feel, which is important, but I don't think every building that we do and it comes through this board, we should push to to that. Anyway.
And in looking at those old pictures, it doesn't look like every building was the same material back then, too. So if we really are going for that context, it's not a uniformity or or concept of uniformity. It it, there was a mixture.
Well, we currently on the street, right on this section, basically, you've got hearts with brick. The next one's a stucco. This one would be the brick or or wood paneling. Next one over is a stucco, which is where Sweet Bay is. And then um, and then after that, you have the the um,
Well, the empty lot, then the bank, yeah.
The awning, the awning company, basically, which is a stone of some sort, and then then you got a metal panel for the back. So it's, that's quite a mixture on that side of the street, but I I agree with you in some ways, but it's, you know, again, like I, like, you know, I I was very much for this, but I'm and I'm still very much for it, but I could settle for brick, too.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm sorry, that's not giving much direction to the the project team, but.
I know, I I think we're kind of. Yeah, I think we're all, you know, we kind of uh, analyze the buildings around and we're everything was mostly in the the reds and tans, and then obviously you get the hints of gray. So I think even with the clapboard, we're still trying to stay within that color family.
Yeah, and and I'm fine with clapboard. I, you know. I, again, it's not a hill I'm dying on either. I saw it. I like it. I like this, too. So again, for me, it's more the details. Um, like like in the sign band or the arched windows or the cornice, you know, what does that end up being? The, there's so actually little body once you're all said and done, that doesn't really matter.
Brian, can you, can you maybe do a view uh, in two weeks with one and the other with the a lineup of all the buildings? Is that possible?
That's a question for Peter.
Yeah.
And Steve, so are we, so back to the I'm just trying to think of what we're, we'll go back to our um, Main Street rendering. You're saying back from this more? Maybe?
Yeah, maybe shoot the other direction up the.
Yeah, the other direction, too.
Yeah.
Okay. Or or where you come down from above, so you can see more of the uh, everything around it, too, even across the street, CBS and the Armory, right, because they're brick. I don't know. It seems, is that horrible to do, or is that pretty doable? Okay.
Um, it'll just be getting the camera right, um, whether it's, you're taking it from Google or getting. It'll just be getting the camera right, um, whether it's, you're taking it from Google or getting out there. So as long as we get some weather where it doesn't rain every day, we might be okay.
Yeah, I, I think the other next step for me too is to understand. What's happening at the streetscape? You know, I, I hear there's no. You know, where are we gonna be able to get trees? Where? Where, what's happening with the sidewalk? What's happening with the town project?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna meet, we're gonna be meeting with the town engineer on that.
To me, that helps with.
Yeah.
What we do for the facade as well.
Yeah, so I, I think, I think. And, and I agree with all that, and I think, um. I think we need some time. I, I don't think we're gonna be ready in two weeks on this. I think we're gonna be wasting it, you know? I just wanna get efficient with these things and just not come back with, with two pitches to look at and waste the board's time. We've gotta, this can give Peter, Peter and Steve, this can give you, you know, we should, we should skip a meeting. Give you a chance to take a look at those things and the, the issues that, uh, Kasumi raised and. And the, and, and the windows in the front. And then maybe get some good pitches of both, all these angles, and then we also need to start talking, uh, with. The town engineer on, on the scape and Rick Salvo has to participate in that. So we, we're gonna need some time to do that. We're not gonna be ready for that in two weeks. We're just gonna waste everybody's time coming back in two weeks.
Brian, I did talk to Bill, uh, a bit, that this, this was coming down the pike and. Uh, noted, um, that the board probably would be pushing to get some of that work done. So you've got a wide sidewalk walk, so like you do other sections of town. And, and I mentioned the San Dorte stuff that they did basically, and I said. It's too bad we can't bring that up the street. And he was very much for that, but I also understand in your meeting with the town council, and maybe you can talk a little bit about that. They were extremely supportive of this concept as well to get some of that stuff in place.
Yeah, yeah, we put, you know, this has been, this, uh, this building has been on the town council's radar. Uh, because of the condition of the building and its prominent location. Um, so they've, uh, had, had, uh, reached out to my client to come in and talk to them about it. Because, you know, it's a, it's a big part of downtown and, and I think that. Um, they like to see the revitalization of this property happening as well. And, uh, they were clear to us that they wanted us to try to work with the town, uh, administration, uh, to coordinate it with. The envisioned stuff and, and try to make some of that stuff happening, happen as part of this project as soon as possible. So I think there's a lot of cooperation, uh, on this property, uh, uh, with all departments and, and town officials and. We will be meeting with the engineering and DPW to see how we can coordinate it and make it, uh. Make it work as soon as possible in this area. There's even opportunities for outdoor dining here because of what's gonna happen with the vision.
Okay.
It was interesting because, you know, the town council, we presented this to them. In, in a rough format, and it's, you know, some of the same concerns, the, the wrapping of the building, you know, they. We talked about brick and, and, you know, to make sure that the sides of the building from all approaches kind of blended in well, which. We're well on our way to make that happen. Okay. Anything else for tonight? No. Okay, board members? Okay, we'll open up a public testimony if anyone has a comment or question. Please raise your hand at this time in the Zoom meeting. Seeing no hands, we'll close it to public testimony for the evening. So Brian, you're talking the 24th then, skipping the next meeting? Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue this here until the May 24th. And Brian, when do we have to?
You're all set on this chip because it's all special permits.
It's all special permit.
Yeah, there's no variances here or.
Okay.
So it's, it's clean. Second. Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Regular voting membership?
Yes.
Go. Yo, Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, unanimous, thanks for the update tonight and, um.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay. Our last continued hearing before we move on to the new ones. Twenty-three dash seventy-three and seventy-four, three thirty-five Washington Street LLC at six ten to six fourteen North Ave. Great, Attorney Brian McGrail for the applicant here. I think I can be relatively quick on this, Mr. Chair. This is the, uh, GMC Buick Albrecht dealership. Uh, at, uh, six ten, six fourteen North Ave. Uh, as was presented at the last meeting, they're, they're looking to do, uh, a small addition. Alls they need is a finding. Um, to the building and they're, and they're upgrading their signage, and I don't think. The board had any issue with this from the last meeting, it was pretty straightforward, I think, um. To refresh your memory, the only, uh, issue was, uh, that, uh, board member Jim McBane was assigned to work with me to figure out how. What relief was needed on the signage to make sure that we get it right. Um, and, and, um, so I was able to speak with Jim and, and, um, what. What he came up with the, with the idea, which, um, I thought was really smart, that. Um, I'm gonna share my screen and I'm getting this finalized, I'm not looking for, to have this closed out tonight because the plans need to be modified. To make sure that they're reflective on the record. Um, but what, um. What, uh, Jim had suggested that, uh, basically. Um, everything should be occupancy signs under our bylaw, which I agree. And instead of. This, this area here, this is the, this is the side that faces the parking lot in one twenty-eight. In this area here where Albrecht is. Um, these are individual lines, but they're kind of in a sign band. This is actually black, it shows it's gray, but it's black, and then we have this. Black Buick GMC. And Jim made the, the suggestion that that whole area should be signage. So he, um. Require, requested that I have the signed company and the architect do calculations on this area, on these areas. They've done it in rough form, not in a format that would be, uh, presentable to the board to, to make a vote for the record. But this is what, what Jim is thinking, the appropriate way to handle this site. Uh, and then on the front of the building, I call it the front, they call it, the way they call it, uh, they call it the side, but this faces North Avenue. That in essence, this entire black area would be sign. Not just individual signs. So what they did is they do a calculation on this, and you can see in red, they're saying that this whole thing is a sign. Now, obviously, there'd be a condition that we can't add letters or anything to this. Um, but it would just be the, 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 um, I think the, the best way, uh, to, um. To designate these as signs, uh, for purposes of approval. On the side of the building. Um, I'm gonna go back to that. Where they have this certified service. Jim's thought on that was that that would just be classified as a traffic control and guidance sign, because it's really directing people to service. So, uh, Jim, do you have anything to add on that?
No, no, that's right. So we just need to. Confirm basically the, the, the aggregate area basically is within or without. So you know what to ask for, so.
Yeah.
And we need the calculations, we need to run the calculations on that, so. We have the, the package all together for the board.
Yeah, and then there's a freestanding sign here, which they pulled it back and. That meets all the requirements in the bylaw, there's no relief needed for that. Jim and I figured that out. So I'll be back at the next meeting, Mr. Chair, um, with a, with a detail. Um, kind of chart, working with Jim for the board's consideration and hopefully vote. But I just wanted to give you an update on what, what direction we're going on that. Okay, so we got new materials tonight, but. Like the sign package still is dated like two thousand seventeen and. Yeah, it's all. So it's not what you just showed with red boxes on it. No, no, this is just, I just got this today, and I just wanted to kind of show you the direction we're going in that. This is what I'm submitting, what I'm showing you now is not, uh, for approval, because the architectural plans that are part of the building. Finding, part of the finding for this project. There's a sheet A three in there that also needs to be updated, because that showed individual sign calculations. Okay. Ask the architect to update that sheet, otherwise. We're gonna have conflicting plans for this project and, and, and when you look at it. Uh, six months or a year from now, we're, we're not gonna be able to figure out what happened. Agreed. So just make sure, please, that, you know. The updated sign package with the final calculations and what's being requested. It's properly dated and updated and everything coordinates, right? So I know, okay.
Yep.
Cause I saw what was in the pack in the file tonight, and I was saying, we're not seeing that, and this thing's still dated two thousand seventeen, so. Okay, fair enough. All right. That's it, I, I request to, um. I request to continue this. Until, uh, your next meeting, let me just check on your timeframe on this, because there is a. A variance in the sign, um, if you can just give me. A minute. Sorry about that.
Feel like we just opened it, Brian.
Yeah, you did, um. So it was the last meeting, so you should be, you know what I'll do, Mr. Chair, why, why, I just agree to extend this until the, uh, end of June. Just to be safe. I don't have that in front of me, but I just don't want you to run into a problem. I think we'll probably close out at the next meeting, if you wanna do that, it's up to you. Do you have to have the file here, Mr. Chair? I do, I was looking for the application, it was clocked in March fourteenth. Okay, so you've got a hundred days from that. I think it'll make, you should be fine. That's gonna take you into June. Uh, June twenty-second. Yeah. So that gives us. Two meetings in May and one in June. So it sounds, seems like we're covered. I agree. Okay. All right, so just continue to two weeks and you think you'll be ready to? I do. Thank you. All right. A motion's always in order.
I move that we continue this to May tenth, just wanted to make sure. Uh, did you?
Oh, no, I didn't, I didn't, my apologies, yeah.
I want to make sure, Mr. Chairman, that you are following all the rules.
Always wanna do that, um, so, um, if there's a member of the public who has a question on, uh, the brief updates we got tonight, please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. Seeing no hands.
Now I'm happy to make a motion to continue this to May tenth.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Regular voting membership?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Go.
Yes.
Tom?
Yep.
And I vote yes. All right, thanks for the updates. Look forward to seeing the final plan in two weeks.
Thank you.
Onto new hearings. Twenty-three dash seventy-five Lorie Fonda at one sixteen Oak Street.
Oh, he's on mute.
Brian, you're on mute or?
It's, it's another, it's another, um. Oh, he's on, you're on mute, Anthony.
Oh, let me just double check with the. All right, Anthony Fray is here for that, Mr. Chair, I think he's on mute. You're on mute.
How's that? I'm so sorry, I'm a little new at Zoom.
Okay, so you'll just have to start at the top, uh, if you wanna share your screen and. Give us a brief description of the proposal here, and then we'll, uh, see if there's any questions from the board.
Okay. I apologize, I'm just a little.
Anthony, this is Brian, you want me to bring it up for you?
Yeah, why don't you do that, Brian, my colleague, Brian McGrail.
I can help Anthony with this. Um, hang on a second. Are you ready, Anthony?
Yes.
Good. There you go.
All right, so we're showing the plot plan of the, um, my client's house. And essentially. We are looking for a variance to install an above-ground pool in the side yard. Which is not allowed, um, under current zoning. And as you can see for the plot plan. Is a need for this. Because number one, there's no room in the backyard. For the pool. Um, which creates a hardship, because that means my client cannot have a pool. Meanwhile, we have a very large side yard that can. Pretty easily accommodate the pool. Um, there are at least two houses on Oak Street and at least one not far over. On Greenwood that also, um. Have side yard pools, so this won't be detrimental to the neighborhood. And. Essentially, um, I don't believe. There will be any objections. And, um, I'll also point out that it, it's, um, a unique situation here. Because of the shape of the lot, as you can see from the plot plan, it is. It is an odd-shaped lot. Respectfully, um. I'll answer any questions the board may have. And we'll. We'll answer as best as we can.
Okay, uh, the first question that should comes to mind, I. Seems reasonable, uh, given the shape of the lot, I think that case can be made. Um, there's really reasonably no other place on the lot to, to position it. Um, there is another aspect of our bylaw that, um. That, uh, there's some sort of screening or fencing, is that proposed around the pool or across the front yard just to protect?
Um, absolutely, um, there'll be a vinyl fence around the pool.
Okay. It's not always shown on the, the proposed plans, but. Um, certainly, uh. You know, we could condition it or whatever, just to ensure it's covered, cause it is another aspect of the bylaw.
All right, and it will be.
Mr. Chairman, this is an above-ground pool.
Yeah.
So you're talking about a. Eighteen-foot fence? I mean, what, what are you talking about, that there's a fence around it?
I'm not sure what you're asking, Chip.
I think it's.
Where you put the fence, I mean, this is an above-ground pool. What are you trying to block, like the, along Oak Street or? There's not a fence needed for.
Access.
Safety or access, so I'm just wondering, are we trying, what? I'm not sure where you're saying, suggesting a fence would go.
The bylaws, one ninety-twenty, section B, if you wanna look at it. A private swimming, private swimming pools are allowed in all residential districts provided that are, they are. And then the. Specific section surrounded by a wall barrier, uniform fence of at least five feet in height designed to discourage and authorize access to the pool.
Yes.
My understanding of the bylaw, just for a safety issue for the fence.
So where are you proposing to put, and by the way, just. I've taken a scale, this triangle fits in the backyard. I've taken a scale, this triangle fits in the backyard. Now, you may not want to do it there. But you take your exact triangle, it doesn't hit any of the house, it. Fits up in that corner, I don't know whether there are big trees there or what. But if a twenty-one foot circumference pool does fit in the backyard. Just. As a point of contention. But I guess where would the fence go here?
Where? Okay.
Um, this is Laurie, um, the fence is gonna go around the whole perimeter of that, where that, um, where my architect, uh. Ed Farrell had, has the triangle, it's gonna, I'm gonna push my current fence that I have out a little bit towards the front. And then go across into a point, not, not all the way to the driveway to the next neighbor, but it is gonna go across the front there. And I'm gonna extend my yard. It's gonna be a six-foot vinyl fence all around.
Okay. I just think it's a good practical thing to do, but again, the bylaw does call for it, so, um.
Yeah, I want it for privacy and stuff like that as well, so, um, but I. Ed Farrell said that I needed to put that pool in that exact spot. It's gonna be, you know, some of it is gonna be in my current yard.
No disrespect to Ed Farrell, but he's a site surveyor.
Yeah, okay.
How tall?
It's a twenty, it's gonna be twenty-one round.
You, but how, how tall?
Uh, it's just gonna be five feet.
The pool's five feet high?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I guess I would ask, have you talked to your neighbors? Do you have any, what letters from your neighbors?
I don't have any letters, but, um, I've verbally spoken to them and they're fine with it.
Okay, well, that's good to hear. At least you confirmed that in, in the public hearing, that you've at least talked to them, even if we don't have correspondence, sometimes we do get that. Um, but we've also had cases where they haven't talked to their neighbors and then they get surprised, why did I get a postcard in the mail and? What's going on over there, and so it can just create problems, it's not so much. Doesn't, doesn't.
They thought we were, yeah, they thought we were at, when they got the postcards, they actually thought we were putting in, in ground, and I said, no, and they said, above ground, you need approval for above ground? I was like, yeah, I guess so. So they, they didn't have any problem with it.
Okay. Well, as you know, you need it in the side yard and that's why you're here.
Yes.
Um, okay. Any other comments or questions, board members?
I would note, if anybody's seen the site, it's, uh. At the property line, basically, it's rock and hillside basically behind here, and this is the only flat area, basically, besides behind the houses. That it, it does make sense in a way.
Yeah, there is a ledge up above.
And it's fairly close to a busy street, which again, I think is just another reason that the fence makes sense, despite the bylaw, but. In addition to the bylaw, um, it's just, it's close to a very busy street and it's foot traffic and. Cars and it just, yeah, even for privacy, so. Um, alright, anyone else? Okay, we'll open this one up to public testimony, if anyone has a comment or question, please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. Seeing no hands, we'll close it to public testimony, so.
Chairman, and I move that, uh. We grant a variance under Article Four. Section one ninety thirty-one C six. Based on the site plan, uh, site survey presented to us this evening by Ed Farrell dated eight eight twenty-two. To allow the above-ground five-foot. Pool to go into the side yard and that there, with the condition that there will be a. Six-foot fence.
I think she said five foot, Chip.
I think she said there's gonna be a six-foot file fence.
She said five feet.
No, six.
But it's six, okay.
Yep.
My bad, sorry.
No problem. I got lucky.
Yeah, no, that's, I want a six-foot fence, yeah. Busy street, um, thank you very much, I really appreciate.
You haven't voted yet.
A motion's been made.
No, I thought he did, oh.
He made a motion, but you know, we gotta vote on it, actually.
You're close, you're close, though.
Okay.
Um. Alright, so the motion's been made, um, for the variance. Thank you, Jim. Any question or comment on the motion? Alright, regular voting membership?
Yes.
Joe? Joe?
Yeah. Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I vote yes, okay, so now it's approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome, um. So, um, if, if you can send a copy of the, uh, the site, this property, the site plan to us, please, I. We have a paper in the file, but not electronic, uh, we'd like to get that for the file and then we can work offline on the decision.
I will do so.
Alright.
I will do, yep, I will do so.
Thank you, you can send it to Gail, I assume you have her address.
I do, yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alright, good luck to you, have a good night.
Thank you, members, good night.
Well.
Hey. Next one, twenty-three dash seventy-six, um. Robert E. Burton, Jr., Patricia A. Burton, Robert E. Burton, III, Melissa J. Bucci at one twenty-eight Oak Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, something's gone wrong with my, um. My computer here, might have to log back on because I, I'm having a hard time on my Zoom, I can't, my screen's gone blank.
Alright, if you need to drop and rejoin, it may help, but, uh, we can. We can pause.
Yeah, just give me a minute.
Okay.
But I just can't. I might, I might lose you here, and if I do, I'll be right back. One second. Well, I'm back, okay. Okay. Sorry about that.
No worries.
Now I'm having problems again. Good. Here with me for one second. We'll log back on in two seconds, okay, Mr. Chair?
Mm-hmm.
I'm back.
Welcome back.
Thank you, sorry about that, that was really odd. So, thank you again, apologies, um.
No worries, let's go.
Hang on a second here. I'll tell you. Open everything here. Almost there. Thanks for your patience, Mr. Chair, members of the board, I think I'm good to go. Uh, for the record, uh, Brian McGee representing, uh, Robert E. Burton, Jr., Patricia A. Burton, Robert E. Burton, III. And Melissa Bucci, who are all owners of property at one twenty-eight Oak Street. Um, and, uh, this is an application, uh, pursuant to, um. Article four, section one ninety twenty-two A one, app for an accessory apartment at the property. Uh, and starting off, I want to be clear that, uh, there's nothing that is changing at the property from what's there today. Uh, it's a, it's a special permit request, uh, for the property in its existing condition. There's no proposed additions or changes to the exterior, uh, or the footprint of the property. Um, this, uh, this property, uh, uh, meets all of the. Uh, requirements of our bylaw as far as, as far as, uh, the special permit requirements, we're not requesting any variances. Um, and as you'll see, as I go through the plans, uh, all of the, um, requirements are met. So I'm gonna go through those standards, if I may, on the special permit, and then I'd like to, uh, talk to the board about some special circumstances as it relates to this property. And, um, and where it stands today as far as the building department is concerned, because I've had some conversations with the building inspector, Mr. DeChristopher along the property. So, I'm gonna proceed, if I may, on, on the bylaw itself and the standard, so first of all. Uh, in that applicable section of the bylaw, paragraph one, uh, specifically talks about allowing accessory apartments within, within one-family properties. Uh, except when there's a forcible covenant, uh, that prohibits it, and that is not the circumstance of this property. Um, paragraph two states that to have an accessory apartment, the lot on which it will be located, must meet the minimum lot area. Uh, and with requirements of the applicable, uh, zone. Uh, this property has well over, uh, well over a hundred feet of frontage and it's twelve thousand square feet. Um, I think I can bring something.
Right, I don't see a site plan in our package that demonstrates that.
Something here, Mr. Chair, hang on a second.
Okay. I see the other calculation, but in, in the architectural, but I did not see something that.
Yep.
Would evidence that part, so I just, if you have something and then you could send it to us.
Okay, I'm gonna, just gonna take me a second to get it. My whole, uh, computer system had something happen with it, that, uh. Really set me up, tilted here. Okay. You can see that now?
Yes.
Okay, let me pull it up for you. So this is the Burton's property. At one twenty-eight Oak Street, as you can see, it's got. Hundred and twenty feet of frontage, hundred and twenty feet in the rear, twelve thousand square feet, so it obviously meets the lot width and lot area requirement of the single residence district.
Okay.
This is the Wakefield Assessors map, map thirty-five, I will send you a copy of that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. My pleasure. So that, that section of the bylaw is met, um. The paragraph three requires that the owners of the one-family lot upon which the accessory apartment is to be located, to occupy at least one of the dwelling units, uh, on the premises. Um, and basically, what's happening here is, um, uh, Bob Junior and Patricia, um, they're the seniors, if you will, uh, they're gonna reside in the accessory apartment. And this, and their son, Bob, uh, Bob the Third and his wife Melissa are gonna reside in the main house, so, and they are all owners, record owners of the property. So they, this, this, this requirement will be met. Um, paragraph four, it states that the special, special permit should issue on a year-to-year basis. Um, and we acknowledge that the issuance is on the year-to-year basis. And as typical, we would request a waiver that, uh, of surety. Uh, as long as the applicant acknowledges on a yearly basis of the ability to remove the kitchen, uh, if necessary, uh, if the accessory requirements are no longer met. Uh, paragraph five requires the accessory apartment must be located in the principal dwelling. Uh, as I mentioned, there's no additions going on here, it's as is. Uh, paragraph six requires a minimum floor area for size of the apartment, as the board is aware, of three hundred square feet. But it can't exceed twenty-five percent of the habitable area, and I'll get into that on the architectural plans, uh, momentarily. Paragraph seven states the accessory apartment shall not involve the extension or enlargement of a building, except to provide access, and this is, again, the building is, 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 as. Is, is, it stands now, so, uh, there will be no addition, uh, involved as far as, uh, the request before the board. Um. So, I'm gonna bring up the plans, if I may.
Mm-hmm.
So this is just an elevation of the house as it stands, um, and basically, this has the calculations on it. By our licensed architect, which is stamped in the right-hand corner. That the main floor plan, the habitable area is twenty-five, twenty-seven. The upper floor, second floor, twenty-three, forty-nine, total habitable area is forty-eight, seventy-six. The in-law or accessory apartment is one thousand forty-one, that's twenty-one percent, so it beats all requirements under the bylaw, there's no variance requested.
Okay.
Okay. As far as the layout goes. This is the first floor plan, which kind of matches the, uh, elevations that you saw. This, this whole part was an addition, which I'll get to, that took place in two thousand nineteen, I'll give you the details on that, that's what I wanted to talk to you about. But I wanted to present the plans first, so. This shows the main house and this is the accessory portion, uh, on the, uh, right-hand side as you face this house. Uh, this is the in-law apartment first floor. And so this has the family in the kitchen, family room and kitchen. And then. Second floor, so again, main house, these are the bedrooms that go with the main house, where, um, Bob the Third. Uh, will live, um, with, um, Melissa, and this is the bedroom and closet for the accessory apartment on the second floor, so pretty straightforward. Um, what I, what I wanted to, um, you know, again, meeting all of the requirements of, of the bylaw, what I wanted to share with the board is, is that. The addition, so, uh, I think I showed you, I'm not gonna go back to it, but the, the entire right side. the addition, so I think I showed you, I'm not going to go back to it, but the, the entire right side, with the garages, and then to the right where the accessory is, those were put on in 2019. And they were put on, the Burton's obtained a building permit to do that, and the building permit called for a garage and game room at the time, because they didn't have an accessory apartment, you know, you can't, you can't put it in, so that's what the permit was, with the intent to convert it to an accessory apartment, they had actually talked to me back at that time about the possibility of doing that. And I talked about the different ways to do it, you could either do an addition and later convert it, or you could ask for a variance, so they decided to do an addition because they were going to do it anyways, no matter what. And they received the final sign-off in that in July of 2020, so that permit for that addition is closed out. After the final sign-off, the kitchen, they put a kitchen in. So there is a kitchen in that accessory area now, it's built, for full disclosure to the board. It was admittedly, it was admittedly done without a permit to do it, within the area that's shown on the plans. So that issue needs to be resolved with the building department from a building code perspective. It all happened, you know, at, you know, COVID was going on at that time, and they did it, so the building inspector knows about it. It has to be resolved with him. I've spoken to him, the way he resolves it, that's going to be up to him. He's either gonna, he said he will have, we'll have to pull permits to, from a building code perspective, to legalize that kitchen with inspections that he will require for the standard that he will want. And, and so we need to satisfy him, and that needs to take place, and the Burton's are aware of that. So I think, you know, the building department evidently has had some phone calls, complaints about an illegal apartment because of that. That's the purpose of the request for the accessory special permit, that's why we're here, because there's two components of this that need to be dealt with. The zoning component, which we're here for, and then subsequently, we're going to have to deal with the building inspector on the building code. But they're independent of each other. So, you know, this is not really any different than if you gave a bill, if you gave a special permit that someone would then go build a kitchen and pull a permit to do it after they get it. So, so I wanted a full disclosure to the board on that, that that's an issue that has to be resolved with a building inspector. And he does want to inspect, he said he wants to get in the house to do that, and he's going to require us to pull permits and probably hire subcontractors to pull those permits to, to rectify that from a building code perspective. So I just wanted the board to know that upfront for full disclosure purposes. But there is no variance request here. And, you know, the other part of it is, you know, in, in, and I think the board knows this. There's, there's no law against having, there's no regulation against having two kitchens in your house, even if you don't want an accessory. Matter of fact, the building department now has a process to do that. That if, if I just wanted to put another kitchen in my house, they would permit me to do that, but they would make me record a covenant saying it's just a second kitchen and it's not for an apartment. But that's not the intent here, the Burton's really want to clean this up, and they want to get the accessory apartment special permit and then work with Building Inspector DeChristopher to clean up the code issues.
So how long have they been, how long have both families been living here?
They've been living there, you know, I don't know the exact date, but I would say probably from around that timeframe, from when the addition was done, Jim. In that, in that area, so certainly, you know, they, they've been living there, you know. I'd say, Bob, are you here? Hey Bob, Bob, are you, are you still online or no?
Yeah, hold on.
We can hear you, Bob, just unmute again. You almost did it. Bob, you're muted, can you try to unmute again? I can tell you this, I can.
I got you, are you there, can you hear me?
We can hear you, Bob, so how long, how long, the question was, how long have all four of you been living in the house, Bob?
Well, the other two have been living there for about eight years. We've been here since 2019 when the addition was built.
The addition was done, yeah, so back when the addition was, was done, Jim, to answer your question.
Yeah, they had a baby over there, so we decided to help them out because they were both working full-time. So we, we asked if we could do an addition.
Okay, that's all.
So, so I understand that the building department at, at the time giving occupancy, basically, had gone in there and had them rip some things out that were going in at the time. And there was a pretty, and, and maybe more recently, the neighbors have forced this issue because they've made so many calls to the building department, but it seems to me, as I learn more about this, that they went ahead with, with basically trying to do this in the cover of night. At the same time, they got a pool in the backyard they haven't come to the, to the board with either, so you know, I, I'm, I, I just find this disconcerting. As you know, I don't like it when these people start designing things and, and then call it all good and want us to, want us to do an in-law apartment, basically, approve an in-law apartment, when in fact, the in-law is supposed to be based on the original building. Now, I get it that this is long since that point, and it is the original building at this point. But I, I still find it disconcerting that this was all done basically under the cover of darkness, and from what I can understand, it was tried while being built out. And I went and saw the plans as to what was submitted to the building department, and this was called a game room and a bedroom upstairs. It was not called anything else. But it sounds to me like as soon as they got their occupancy, they put the kitchen in again, so I, I, I have a problem with this, and maybe instead of just signing off on it, maybe this was the one case where they've got to pay a certain amount of money each year, along with a certification that it's being used as we approve it here. I, I just, I don't trust it, that the people basically that did this work are in fact doing it in the right way, or the right manner, or the right attitude, whatever.
Well, I can tell you that I, I've talked to the Burton's going back, and they always had an intent to go for an accessory apartment going back to, for years, and then COVID struck, because the final sign-off on this was July of 2020. So they always had an intent, I told you at the beginning, admittedly, they should not have put the kitchen in, they didn't have the permits to put the kitchen in. But, you know, it doesn't mean that the, that the house as it stands doesn't qualify for an accessory apartment. Ironically, as far as building the addition, where they intended to put the, the accessory apartment, that's the way you're supposed to technically do it under the bylaw. That's how you're supposed to do it, you know.
Process, it's the process.
But you always, Jim, you always, you know, usually, in our respective vote against those variances, because you say, I don't want to, you know, allow, I want it to be built first. And, and these, and, and the Burton's actually did that, they built the addition first. The only misstep that they did was to put the kitchen in without, without permits, that's the only misstep that they did. And they admit that, we're working with the building inspector to resolve it. And, you know, it shouldn't be punitive that, you know.
Ryan, you, you, you cite COVID, we, we met all throughout COVID, what, what part of COVID prevented them from filing an application? Seriously.
No, I'm saying to him that, that as far as additions that were being done at that time. I mean, you know, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not justifying what they did, what they did was wrong.
Because I'm usually on the opposite end of Jim, because I, I don't mind when they're, it, it happens this way generally, because I think it can. But I'm, I'm with Jim on this one, though, that, that I, you know, this was done wrong. This was done inappropriately, and the only reason they're here is they got caught by their neighbors. And I, I, I don't think they'd be here otherwise, I really don't.
The, 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 I'll be honest with you, and, and I respect you, why you feel that way, but I can tell you that it's not the case, because they've always intended to do this. That, you know, and they went about it wrong, but they had conversations with me going back in 2020 about doing an accessory apartment on this property. And, and I had conversations with them, and I said, there's a couple of ways that you can do it. And the ways that you can do it are, as we discussed, you can apply for variance, and they said, we're just going to do the addition. Because we're going to do the addition anyways and deal with it with maybe just a second kitchen, if that happens. The big misstep that they did was that they just put the kitchen in after the fact, but they always intended to go for the accessory apartment.
And that's, but if they were talking to you, Brian, they knew there was a bylaw and a need for special permit, they could have done it three years ago after they finished the, the addition. So that, to Tom's point, why did it take three years to go get a, a permit? When talking to you, you, they know they needed it.
Yeah.
But it took them three years to get here, so.
I mean, the, the, the sign-off on the, on the family room inspection was July of 2020, you know.
It's almost three years ago, it's almost three years ago.
Yeah.
You walked us through, they, they did, everything meets the, the bylaw, right? So why didn't they just file the paper? You know, if, if they wanted to put this as accessory apartment, and you walked us through this, they don't need a variance. Everything did actually works for the zoning bylaw, all they had to do is file.
The, the, the big issue that they have, Tom, is they, they, they have a, they don't have, they don't have a violation of zoning right now. There's no violation of the zoning bylaw right now, they're entitled to have two kitchens in their house. So they don't violate the zoning bylaw, they violate the building code.
Yeah, but you said they need a covenant, did they get that covenant?
No, but they could do that tomorrow if they, if they, you know, there's no, I, I deal with that all the time, we had the case up in Windship Drive with the person had two kitchens in the house, they had it in there for 20 years. And, and a neighbor called on that, and we did the covenant and we cleaned it up. So, you know.
I'm generally sympathetic to the, the multi-generations and helping with the kids and stuff, I get all that, but, you know, this one just doesn't feel right.
I, I, I get it, but, you know, again, you know, with, I, I hear where you're coming from, but with all due respect, it, it meets the requirement. And, you know, I think, I think the issue that's being focused on is a building code issue, it, it's separate and apart from the, from the zoning bylaw. I mean, if you want, you know, another thing that, you know, I'm happy to do is if you would want to continue this, it will clean up the building code issue first. And, and make sure the building inspector is all set from a code perspective, you know, that's an option, we're, we're more than happy to do that.
I don't see it as a building code issue, I see it as an occupancy issue that happened before the fact, period.
Okay, guys, I, I appreciate that everybody, including myself, is disappointed on how this happened. Right, Jim, you've always hated these end arounds, which is what I consider this to be. They I don't know what to say, we, we have a zoning code, they meet the zoning code. Other than being upset about how it happened, I don't think we have a lot to do, and, and the only choice we have within our bylaw, as Jim you stated, is not to allow, to have them set aside the financial responsibility where it sits there. The, where they have to verify that, that it's an in-law, that it's a a, a, a relationship living in the place, as far as the building code goes, that's Ben's problem, it's not ours, he can have all, but ours are, does it meet the requirements, which it does? Did they go about it wrong? Yep, Brian's admitted they have, and they have admitted they have. They didn't lie about how long they've been in there, they said they moved in in 2019. I mean, so the only other choice we have, I say, is to not grant them that it's just a letter, but to have some surety. That's, we still have that right. I don't know that we've ever done it, but we do have that right.
Well, I, I just don't want to encourage this in the future, basically, as you know, I, I don't like this direction, although this is more what I would have others do, which is a period of time before you ask for the in-law apartment as asking for it all at the same day, because you're building a new building, period. So, you know, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm not going to vote on this. If I vote on it, I'm going to say no. So I'm not going to vote on it, I'm going to leave it to you guys to figure out, basically, but I don't like it, I don't like the way it smells, period.
Well, you're a voting member and you have every right to vote a certain way, when it comes time to vote, you can abstain if you want, but you can also vote, you can one way or another, but I don't, you, you don't have a perceived conflict of interest here, so I would say you should, you should vote as a regular voting member and just vote how you feel you need to vote, but yeah, I, I, I agree with Chip, I, again, we're disappointed, and I think the applicant, Brian, you're hearing that. How, how they got here and the time it took them to get here, when they probably, if this was their intent, knew they needed it all along. But they do meet the bylaw, as you've demonstrated, for, for a special permit, so. You know, in that respect, I think we have an obligation to vote. And unless somebody finds something that isn't met in the bylaw, we need to call that out, otherwise, they meet the criteria, so.
No, I, I get it, I, I, I guess I get to hold my nose and vote for it.
However, we don't have to grant them just a letter, we can make them go through, not make them, we can have them get a surety.
Right, it says the board shall require it, and we typically waived it, but we, the bylaw says it shall require it, so in this case.
Don't have to waive it.
We, we can require.
At that point, they got to go back, and if Ben's going to go make him get code, I don't want, you know, they, they said they got a young kid, I, I, I'm not looking to punish your family here, you know, but it just, I don't know.
It's, it's not about punishing the family, although it is, it's, it's to basically send a message to others that do this same trick, basically, and I call it a trick.
So to describe.
I, this is just something to think about going forward, and I, I think I, I almost disagree with, with Jim, and I think this is one of the reasons how we got here, and, and, you know, with Jim's preference of having someone do the addition, some number, whatever that number is, six months, a year, two years, and then come to us? I think it makes way more sense to come ask for a variance, doesn't mean we'll approve it, but it makes process-wise a whole lot more sense to have the whole project in front of you, and maybe we wouldn't have been in this situation. That's neither here nor there for this, but it's just something to think about going forward.
Okay.
All right.
Be in this situation, if that's what we, what we encouraged, so we encourage going that, and that discourages where we are.
Right, now, other than someone hearing this or reading it in the paper, or seeing the recording, or they work with Brian in the future and know the way the board's coming from. I don't know how this encourages or discourages future behavior, because unless they're on this meeting, they're not hearing this discussion, right?
Well, Brian said that he, because of prior guidance, he counseled these people to go this way, and going this way is what got us in this situation, so. You know, Brian appearing before us, it's not, and it's not Brian's fault, not, not, you know, he's doing what the guidance we've taken, but it just doesn't make any sense.
Whoever represents us on the bylaw committee. Well, that's all I was going to say, Chip. Look at this bylaw and say, can we reword it, or can we redo it in a certain way that would prohibit this from happening, or do we want to prohibit, you know, I, I, I'm with Jim where I have a I guess, I don't know, I, I'm. If you can, if you can meet all the requirements without variances and setbacks and everything else, and you want to put on an addition to have an in-law apartment, I'd rather know that that's happening than not, I think that's your point, Greg, right?
Absolutely.
Is that there's no variances needed. Go down that road, say, this is what we want to do, this is how we're going to do it, and be able to do it. And if they need a variance, and we don't feel like that's worth to do it, then don't, don't give them the variance. However, in a case like this, where they needed no variances for the addition, no variances for the in-law, I I think although we're all disappointed as how it happened, I feel my hands are tied, that we have to vote for it. And to single them out and say, okay, you then have to have surety, I'm, I'm not sure that's the right thing to do either. I just threw it out there, kind of.
Think about it, because it's in our purview to do it, so once you think about it, I'm going to open this to the public, because I think we've, we've all made our comments known, and I don't want to belabor it, I don't think we need to. All right, so if any member of the public wishes to ask a question or make a comment, please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting at this time. All right, so if any member of the public wishes to ask a question or make a comment, please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting at this time. Melissa Estrella. Please come off mute and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, good evening. Um, my name is Melissa Estrella. I live at, uh, my family and I live at Four Holland Road. So, um, the property in question is on the corner of Oak and Holland, so we're sort of like neighbors by like. A hundred walking feet. Um, towards the property and respectfully, I think that. Um. Allowing this to happen sets a bad precedence. Um, but I also understand, you know, that. It does meet all the requirements of the accessory apartment and I do hope that. Um, a certification for occupancy is required of them, because the feeling is. That what's to say this? This, um, part of the house isn't somehow used in other ways. So, um. I just hope a certification of occupancy is seriously considered.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing no other hands, we'll close with the public testimony.
So Dave, so Dave, pass my vote on to somebody else. I'm. I'm not. Going to pro- be part of this process anymore.
Okay, respectfully, Jim, I I just think you should vote as a voting member, one way or the other, but unless there's a conflict of interest, but um, if you really want to just stay out of it. Okay, oh, so Greg, you're the next up alternate. Are you willing to vote on this one in Jim's place? Okay. So voting members on this. Dave. Yep, Joe, Tom, Greg, okay. So, um, before a a motion gets uh entertained here, um. We should probably just discuss that aspect of surety or just annual certification.
And I'm going to make the motion and the motion is going to be with. Um, without surety, but annual notification, I think, otherwise would be punitive and. That that. Doesn't feel right to me either. Two wrongs don't make a right.
Okay, I just want to be clear and anyone. Everyone okay proceeding as is?
Mister Chair, should we uh make sure that the building inspector signs off before this all happens or like?
I think they, Brian, I think it would be because that is still running its course, not sure how quickly it could and we get this thing filed, but. It could be a condition that it's, you know, the code issues are rectified with the building inspector accordingly, could be a condition.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. We have to do it anyways. If we don't do that, Ben's going to order the kitchen to be torn out. You know, which he, you know, he's he's not, he knows about this issue. I talked to him about it. Gail knows he knows about it and. He he said, hi- his comment to me was, he he first he wants the issue re. The the way the billing inspector works is is before he issues an enforcement order, he lets the people of their attorney know there's an issue. And he gives them a chance as he should to rectify it. And if he doesn't, then he's going to play hot ball and issue an enforcement order to do something. So he's made it clear to me. That he he wants this resolved and he's going to require permits pulled for the kitchen and inspections to his satisfaction. With licensed plumber, licensed electrician, he might require some of the walls to be open. That's going to be his discretion, so we can see what he needs to see. And then hopefully it will be, you know, he'll be fine with it, but it's going to, you know, if he has to have something redone, it will be redone, but it's going to be. It's going to be on his on his watch and up to his standards.
Understood.
So you can put that condition that, you know, the if you want, that the, you know, applicant shall resolve, uh, you know, building, uh. You know, uh, code issues. I I the the only hesitancy I have on that is, my point is. They have to do it because I talked to the building inspector today. He's adamant about it and he's not going to just let that go. And the hesitancy I have in a condition, I just don't want to scar their title to their property. That, you know, uh, they're going to get an occupancy for this or the building department to have something on record that says, you know, you get a building code issue with the registry of deeds. I I just don't, it's up to you. We'll do it. I just don't know if it's needed. I I but I I should say I really don't think it's needed, but but if you require it, that's up to you.
Okay, I hear your point.
I don't think it gets us much. We can't tell the building inspector to do anything.
Right. Right, no, that's what I was going to say it, yeah. Yeah, I I hear your point, Brian.
My first call tomorrow is if this approved, I'm going to call the building inspector and we're going to say, what do you want to do? You know?
Yeah, okay. All right, again, just before motions made, because that would potentially be a condition, but I. I'm okay without it, because it it's got to be done anyway. All right, Chip, if you're ready.
I think I am. I move that under the special per- uh that we permit. That, all right, I'm starting again. I move that we. Grant the special permit under Article four for section one ninety twenty-two. I never can get all the numbers right. A. One K F that we grant the permission for an accessory apartment. As because as it was presented to us tonight, they meet all the specifications for an accessory apartment. And that we also waive the need for surety with an annual letter of occupancy.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Brian, we'll get a copy of that plan, right? That accessories map.
Yeah, I just made it up.
Okay, thank you. And and the the other architectials too, I don't know if we got those, but okay.
You do, those are those are part of the application.
No, no, but electronically, we, you know, we need.
Oh, I can send them electronic, yeah.
Yeah, so just send them together, okay. Um, all right, um, voting members, uh. Uh, Chip, all in favor?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Can I vote yes? All right.
Thank you.
Is this um, just out of for future reference, is this? Four out of five or two added or three out of five?
Four.
It is four for a special permit?
Mm-hmm.
I thought, yeah, okay.
Okay.
Last new hearing. Twenty-three dash seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, Northeast Warehouse Boston LLC at Three Melvin Street.
Okay, thank you, Mister Chair. Brian McGrell representing Northeast Warehouse Boston LLC at Three Melvin Street. Um, with with me uh tonight is Jerry Keen. He's the principal owner of the uh entity, the applicant. Uh, John Ogren is our uh site civil engineer. Um, a ton Siddika, uh Siddiko is a a architect from Vita Architects. Um, this property is, um, we we I'm going to orient you, I think. Probably with the architectural plans first and then John will, um, said the architectural plans do a pretty good job of it, so I'm going to do that in a second, but. Just to talk about um where the property is and what we what we're requesting. Is it's um, it's Three Melvin Street, which is the old home of Crystal Motor Express, which is up behind Shaw's supermarkets. Sits up on the wall. Um, as you in the in the parking lot of Shaw's. And currently on that site is is a warehouse location. It's now Northeast Warehouse. They the Jerry has purchased it. Um, from the Massey Masseyello family. Um, Jerry is here and Ron Masseyello is here also is one of the principals of Chris Crystal Trucking. They're related. Uh, Jerry is Ron's son-in-law. And, um, so Jerry has through Northeast Warehouse has purchased it and uh for years, Crystal. Trucking ran um warehouse in conjunction with a trucking terminal there. And then, um, eventually, you may recall that another business went in there on the site, which is the Granite Company. Old Northeast Granite Company. Um, which is up behind McCollum Concrete and they have sold um reclaimed granite for years and they will be. For the board, so there was kind of a mixed use going on. That property was warehouse. Uh, trucking terminal and granite, uh granite sales. So what's happened is, um, the way the business is operated by Jerry now, it's all warehouse. There's no more trucking terminal there. And, um, also, uh, old not old Northeast Granite, um, is or old New England Granite. Um, in any event, the Granite Company is leaving the site. They're moving out. Um, and they're moving out shortly. They're relocating. Um, so but off of the site. So what's happened, what's happening here is, um, Jerry's looking to put an addition on the building. Um, good size addition, as you'll see. Uh, it meets all the density requirements. We're entirely within the industrial district, so the industrial district is is. This isn't allowed use in the industrial district warehouse. Um, so as as you'll see on the plan, it meets, you know, easily meets the F A R requirements. Um, and as I mentioned, it's allowed by, right? And the reason for the addition is for, you know, what what Jerry does is he he warehouses stuff for companies, so they, you know, they want a place to park their stuff. Um, and and that's what he does and and as he's explained to me, when stuff is brought in, it usually stays for two or three, two or three months. Uh, there's been a significant demand of uh demand from his clients. A lot of this has to do with the supply chain issues. Um, the people looking to 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 be able to find new places to move stuff. And, um. You know, our position on this currently, uh, he has about five trucks in and five trucks out a day. Um, and the estimation is there's not going to be a significant increase in trucking. It's probably as Jerry uh said, and he's here tonight to talk to you about that, if you'd like. It's his estimation is might go up to seven or eight, so that would be seven in, seven out versus five in, five out. Uh, the uh trucks for the granite are no longer going to be there and certainly it's going to be much less than it was when it was used by Crystal as a. Um, trucking uh terminal. Um. I also want to point out that, um, if you look what's happening here, um, the there's a there's an in. There's the we're loop, we're actually on the on the doors for the uh that service the warehouse, even we're put, even though we're putting an addition on the building. There's going to be a reduction in in um loading doors of seven, net seven reduction. Um, so, uh, compared to what's there today. Um, so, you know, just as evidence that there's not going to be a lot of um, a lot of trucks going in there and going out. So with that said, I'm going to start, as I said, with the architectural. Just to kind of give you a flavor, because this does kind of a nice job with the overhead of the site and then. I'm going to hand it over to uh John Ogren to kind of walk you through the site plan. So this is the um, this is the existing site. Um. Uh, you can see, I'm this is kind of the outline of this. Building and actually there's a there's a piece of the property that is here and you'll see it on John's site plan that goes all the way down to Melvin Street by by. The baseball field, now sell a baseball field which is over here. Uh, Melvin Street is a is a is a private way which goes through the McClellan property out to New Salem Street. So the way the trucks are going to maneuver are in go in and out, they don't go down by the baseball field. They they. Currently and historically go up through McClellan and they utilize uh New Salem Street, which Jerry informed me today. Um, we are, uh, this is the existing building, as you can see, and this shows the addition and it's a combination. Of of offices, we've got a calculation up here. Um, so the addition is thirty-five thousand. It's a good size addition, is bigger than the existing building. Existing is twenty-one eighty-seven for a total gross of fifty-seven oh four. And the proportions are warehouse. Um. Were designated as tenants because he has different customers, twenty thousand and then thirty-three. And then the other portion is offices, which are, you know, to equal the total, if you will, of the fifty-seven. Um, oh, four. Um. This just gives you another idea of the layout. Kind of this is how the storage happens inside the building and where the offices are located. And I'm sure you're going to want to look into more architectural detail, uh, but this this gives you some massing idea. Uh, because the the white is the existing building and this is the proposed addition. And. Our T N can speak a little bit more to this far as the height goes and stuff like that, or John can too. Um, and one of the, one of the things that we're looking for relief and and you might recall that and did the old. Um, and this is kind of just an elevation of how it how it how it would look in relation to what's there. Um, one of the requests for relief that we're looking for is parking, because. Uh, you might recall the storage facility that R J Kelly did down on um Audubon Road off of Audubon Road. The the storage parking requirements, uh, or the warehouse parking requirements make no sense. I I think it requires, John will go through the table, but. I think it requires us to have something like, you know, over fifty parking spaces and in. Jerry's saying at the most he needs fifteen, so. We're looking for uh relief on parking. We might want to actually talk to you about reducing more parking than we're actually showing, but that will be as we go through the process. Um, so with that said, just kind of giving you a flavor of the location, what's happening, I'm going to, if I can, Mister Chair, hand it over to John. Um, and he'll he'll kind of like lay out the site for you a little bit better than I did. John, could you take the screen? You there, John? There you go. Thank you.
Evening. For the record, John Ogren, Hayes Engineering, with the Site Civil, um, for this project. Um. Kind of as Brian had said, just to give you kind of a a quick orientation. Um. Three Salem Street to the east of us, uh, it's basically an industrial park. Um, to the south is is Shaw's supermarket and to the north and the west is um McCollum. Concrete, um, we do, the total, um, acreage is three point two acres. Uh, we do front on Melvin Street, two places, one over here over by McClellan. And another one down here on Melvin Street, uh, kind of opposite. Um, that's our playground. Uh, it is kind of an odd shaped lot. Um, it's kind of. There's front edge out on Melvin Street here. There's access into the site from there. And then there is also the ability to access the site. Um, from New Salem Street down Melvin Street to the site itself. As Brian said, existing warehouse for the recycled uh granite business, um. Existing building. Let me bring up that. This might help a little bit. So this is the existing building, existing conditions. Um, it's about almost twenty-three thousand square footprint. Um, existing, as you can see too, the site itself is predominantly uh paid or there's sections that are concrete. Um, there's not much in terms of uh landscaping on the site itself. In terms of grades. Um, it's lower down here on Melvin Street. It comes up the hill. Uh, flattens out in front of the industrial park and then it comes up again further up into the site itself. Uh, so there is some grade from Melvin Street up to the site, then there is some grade that goes across the site. Kind of from east to west. As far as what's being proposed, um. So this is the existing building. This is the proposed addition. About thirty-five thousand square feet. Um, we have proposed forty-seven parking spaces, the required parking spaces, um, would be fifty-eight. And just Brian mentioned the the warehouse component, uh, the requirement would be. Uh, forty-five spaces out of. Um, the total fifty-eight required, so it's it's fairly large portion of it. As far as sewer, electric, communications, um. Those will utilize either internally within the building, connect the addition to it or uh to services that. Come up essentially out from Melvin Street onto the site itself. There, this proposed addition is in areas that's uh currently pavement or concrete. Um. We are adding some, there's a small increase in open area that we're providing on. The site with some some green spaces, kind of an, I recall, kind of the front or the the main entrance. Um. Probably the best. Just to give you an idea in terms of traffic flow. It's proposed that. You know, regular vehicles, cars would come off of Melvin Street or could come in here, this is a two, this is two way traffic along the strip. But as, once you get on the site, it's generally a one way, so. It's envisioned that the trucks would come from New Salem Street, now Melvin Street. Enter onto the site here, they would either go to the loading docks on the west side, or come around the site. And back into these loading docks that are proposed on the north side of it. So people entering in regular passenger vehicles would come in here, they, this, this is one way. One way out this way, and then they can exit here, or they could exit out Melvin Street. The only other thing I just want to add. In this brief overview is. On site, there's it's kind of limited drainage, um so we are introducing some catch basins um down on this driveway. That will eventually, that are designed to um come and tie into. Uh existing drainage down on Melvin Street, now the majority of that water is um to surface runoff and just flows down the driveway. We're also adding an infiltration system uh to help mitigate uh the runoff. From the site, uh from the the proposed addition, the roof trains will go into this infiltration system and then tie into this training. Change system and eventually down towards Melvin Street.
And John, you've done all the uh turning radiuses on the trucks.
Yeah, yeah, we we ran auto turn around the site. To ensure that the trucks, the the larger trucks are what park in the back here. That they can make the the maneuver around the building and back into here.
Obviously, if the trucks can get around the fire department, get around there too.
Correct.
Yeah, can you go to the zoning table, John, you could? For me? Please. Just blow that up. So i- it's a legal nonconforming lot, just from one perspective, the lot width, just because it's funky shaped lot, as John mentioned, because we have that. That we 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 basically set our frontages down where the ball field is. But as far as lot area, it's not even close, in an industrial district, you need twenty thousand square feet, we've got three point two acres. Uh lot frontage, we meet that frontage um down by, so we meet the frontage required, but we don't meet the lot width because of that bottleneck. As I mentioned, the floor area ratio, which is a lot in industrial district is one point five, we're not even close to what we're doing here. Um, so you know, even though it might look like a big addition, as far, the the site has been very much underutilized over the years for what the industrial district allows. Front yard is not applicable because of the, of the shape of the lot. Um, as far as the side yard setbacks go, we meet those requirements, we meet the rear yard requirement by quite a bit, as you can see. Uh, one story is what's um. We're proposing. Um, there, there is no limit on stories in the industrial district, but there is a limit on on height of sixty feet. Current building's twenty six, and we're proposing the addition will be forty four point seven, but again, it meets the bylaw requirement. Maximum building coverage um fifty percent, and we're at forty one percent. It's sixteen point five now in minimum open area. We, you know, that is an existing nonconformity, but we're actually making that better. Uh, just because of all the uh, all the pavement on the lot, right, John?
Yeah, it's between the the the, there's some landscaped areas, and there's some additional um sidewalks that we were added.
So I, you know, in in the real, the real issue, you know, I think we could even make more improvements on the site, because we're. You know, we're, we're required to have um, as John said, fifty eight, we're proposing forty seven, because we figured that's kind of what could fit, but. Jerry feels we only need fifteen, if that, um to. You know, to deal with, because of the warehouse has limited people in there, and it's really just people that are in the office. So we're happy to um answer any questions, Jerry's here also, Jerry Keane, if you have any questions on his business operation. Um, he's happy to answer those directly for the board too.
So what would you consider doing with the other parking spaces if you didn't maintain what you're proposing?
I don't know, we're open to thoughts, I mean, just make it.
Okay, I didn't know if you had something in mind, and.
I have something in mind, Dave. Like that, that blank wall that's on the, the. Adjacent to, you know, the Shaw's, where some of those parking spaces are, I think if if I'd be. If they don't think they need that many spaces. And that they can prove that out a little bit, why wouldn't we put some trees in there, because it's a warehouse, it's a blank wall? Why wouldn't we try to? Put some buffer there? It's one thought, I don't know, you know, John can talk about, you know, topography and everything else that's there, and if he thinks it could make that happen, but I think. It's worthy of looking at, that's all I'm saying.
Jerry, uh, are you there, can you maybe just talk about your parking needs, you you're, you're, you can unmute there for a minute?
Hi, everybody.
Yeah, I'd like the board to hear directly from you, Jerry, because this is kind of, you know, th- this is, I guess, a little bit of a unique project, you know. From, you know, from being in the industrial district, so you know, so you know, it's easy for me to say you don't need the parking, but it's probably more appropriate for you to tell the board. Your thoughts on the parking and how your business operates, so they get a direct understanding from you, so they can make a decision on that.
Yeah, so, so as you said, um, it's, you know, warehousing, um, we have. Uh, I think eighteen customers in there at the moment. We, you know, uh, take in um freight and store it for. Sometimes up to a year, six months to a year. The operation we have at the moment, uh, we have two office people, and we only have two dock workers. So there would probably be an additional uh one office worker, and maybe an additional. Four or five uh dock workers. So the amount of parking just for the staff would be, you know, twelve. And then, you know, some parking for visitors, which is, you know, rare, but does happen.
Thank you. I'm happy to answer any other questions the board might have, either myself, or John, or uh Tanner, Architect, or Jerry directly.
So I'm in, all in favor of Tom's idea of a significant buffering. Like almost taking half of those parking spaces and making it green space up to the building, so that. You know, you're really significantly adding some, some green space up there, because there is none at this point. Especially when you got McClellan, and then you got the other industrial park. I guess my concern, uh, is there going to be any cold storage here?
There'd be no cold storage.
Okay. My, my concern is, when I was the trucking depot, you know, there were always. Trucks and eighteen wheelers parked along the edges of the property and not necessarily in a bay. Um, one of the conditions I would always have, so what's your, what's your operational timeframe? Do people come in during the day, are they coming in parking their truck at night? And then it's getting unloaded in the morning, and then they leave. Uh, how many trucks do you expect to have, eighteen wheelers, do you expect to have parked on site? At night?
So we don't have any parked on site at night, and all deliveries come in. Um, from eight uh until eleven is when we take the deliveries. And then the sh- the outbound shipments is from three to five, and we close at five. Saying that, if a truck did come, um, he would, you know. Back into one, one, one of the doors, and if he had to stay there for the night, it. I I can't say it never happens, it does happen, but it's, it's rare that they come at night, they usually just come in the morning.
It all depends where they're coming from, right?
It depends where they're coming from. They come from Texas, they're going to come, a lot of um, the the trucks that come into us, they're L T L trucks, like Old Dominion. FedEx, so they leave their terminals in the morning, and they they come to us.
And just so I understand, you've got how many doors out the, I'll call it the back, the McClellan side?
On the, on the McClellan side, there is. Uh, I think it's fourteen, the thirteen or fourteen.
And how many doors on the existing building side?
On the um.
I think.
The left side.
Existing.
Six, s- seven, yeah, seven.
So you have twenty one doors total?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then there's some, there's some on the Shaw's side, there's two on the Shaw's side.
There are some on the Shaw's side?
Exist.
Existence, yeah.
There are three.
Yeah, we're proposing nine doors then on on the, on the new addition, but we're removing sixteen.
Well, so that, that goes, I guess I don't understand the front of the building. Where the parking for the offices and all that are. Um, because that's where Tom was talking.
Let me go to um. Let me share my screen, John, if you could for a minute, and and uh maybe our tan can pipe in here too, because I think, I think the, I think the Architectials might. Might help with that. Because they kind of show the base chip.
The site plan doesn't really show.
Yeah, no, this, this will help. Okay. So these are, these are the ba- these are the bays, right, guys?
Yes.
So we got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine on this side.
Yeah.
And then here we got. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, as I said, for a total of sixteen.
Okay, so nothing on the front side?
No, tho- tho- right, guys, those are the only loading areas, nothing, nothing here and nothing here, right? Yeah.
Right, so Chip, that's why I was looking at the, like, we called the front side, because the other parts of the building. Aren't really that visible from the public way.
Yeah.
I think McClellan's going to have a problem with what they look like, right? I mean, you've got a cement plant, so it's, it's what we can get up on top of that. I agree with you, Tom, I think if we could, fo- I I'll use the word forest, or if we could. Create a lot, because those current doors that are in the, with the crystal sign above it, they go away.
Right.
They're not being shown on this plan.
And if we. That's right, correct, Jerry?
No, they stay. That one's right under the crystal sign.
That's not on the plan, and we just looked at.
Well, let, let me explain that, so I'm the architect, uh, Harpan Sadiq from the architects for this one. Uh, what's happening there is that we are not operating those doors anymore. That's why you have a walkway for pedestrians and parking for visitors and tandem car parking on that side.
Right, so my suggestion would be those doors go away.
They could, they could, I mean, it's a discussion, we, uh, like you said.
You're not going to use them. I would just assume have it go away. And redo this parking so that we could get some green in there. I mean, if we really help you and reduce the parking to what you need, and we get rid of some of the bituminous pavement. And really tree it.
Right, I mean, I I understand, and I'm very much in agreement with that proposal. Uh, we haven't run it by the owner, obviously, but it's, it's a good idea. In terms of when we, when it comes to the building, uh, the pretty movement of uh the openings comes. Uh, it's followed by what we replaced it with, so it's part of the longer bit discussion. So if we're moving those three openings that are pretty visible from the Shaw's parking lot, what are uh we replacing them with? I wouldn't want there to be, for example, aesthetically, my opinion only, there to be a blank wall continuous like it was. So I would much rather prefer the openings to remain there, even though they are not operable, as just as a. More detail on the, on the wall.
I, I mean, this is a good open discussion, if I, if I may, Mr. Chair, um, you know, Jerry, what would, you know. Just so you can pipe in, because this is your billing, what would be the necessity of keeping these doors if they don't have a loading area, if they go to a walkway?
Well, that's not dark height on the inside of them doors, so that, if you just square off from. Where the ramp is, if you square right up, just make that, that's all brown floor, there's no dark inside there. So I would have to raise it up. Or else it's dead space.
Right, so there's no need for those doors in your operation?
No, I could, I could raise up the floor on the inside, five foot or four foot. To make it the same as the rest of the warehouse.
So we gain space back. Inside.
Yeah.
Usable space as opposed to having a loading dock where you back your truck right into the building.
Yeah.
So Jerry, it could work for you to get rid of those doors.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, yeah, okay, yeah.
And the other question is, is, is you've got racking all the way up to fifty feet? Or forty five feet?
Yeah, with the exception of what is needed for the roof structure, basically, it's maximizing the envelope to be able to store as much as possible.
So how many positions does that give you?
I don't think we did that calculation yet. But we're just trying to maximize it, given the current zoning. And, and like.
One of the other things that I always get concerned about in warehouses, is that if you know what your racking layout is. You know what you're, yeah, the rest of it is, is there a way to do high story windows? Openings to let natural light in, and also to break up the flat walls? I think, A, your workers would like it a little bit. Um, and, and if it's not disturbing or interrupting your racking. I think it would be a great addition to the building, what I'm trying to do is, is minimize the big box that this is becoming. And somehow, whether it's by color or by. You know, this has become a huge big box, which is fine, that's great, if you can fill it, more power to you. But is there a way we can break up some of these walls? So that it doesn't look just like big flat walls, and certainly, you know, out on the back. You've got docks that are probably, I'm going to assume you've got twenty foot doors going in. Cause your loading dock, or or at the, the, the top of the door would be probably fifteen foot doors with. A four foot six loading dock or whatever, or lift gates, or however you're doing it. Yeah, but, but. You know, I, I think we can, you could. By adding some light and windows, by if we gave you s- some. To Tom's, going back to Tom's idea to minimizing some of the parking, to create some more s- space in front. We could make it, with your help, we could make it not look. At least from the Water Street side. Uh, as much of a big box as it's going to be, from this perspective.
Well, it'd make a good clear story too.
Yeah, I mean. You can't do all clear, Jim, because the racking is going to be in front of some of it, but you.
Oh, I understand, but the racking goes in a certain direction which you can work.
Correct, and once they define the racking and positions they need. You know, I'm surprised, quite frankly, if you're building a building this size, that you don't know how many spots you're going to have. Because that would be the first thing I'd want to figure out, is how do I maximize the space? And how many slots, you know, what racking do I do, and what does that give me for capacity, but. Anyway.
Yeah, it's, it's the first night, it's the first night, so we'll come back.
I don't really care about positions, I do care about windows, I care about breaking up the facade.
Yeah.
I think there's a lot of opportunity, but I'm fully in favor of the project.
Will there be any, like, you rooftop units on top of that? Either existing size side, or like the new forty four feet side? Like additional to what you already showing?
Uh, yes, probably, yes, we do not have mechanical engineers on board yet, but probably yes, they're going to be very minimal. Because this is not a multifamily residential or retail building or a school, so uh it's just one big box, they're probably going to be. Uh, packaged units, uh, air units for heating and cooling the space. But uh, I don't estimate any of those to be visible from. But, uh, I don't estimate any of those to be visible from, uh, uh, street level, uh, viewpoint. The building is just. Too big for that, so if we center them on the. On the roof, I know those are gonna be visible.
Okay, but like any site plan review, we'd like to see what we're getting, so. We wanna know what we're getting, we wanna. Hey, you know, not be surprised later and say, where did that come from? So, so do think about it and, you know, show it on a future plan, like where those mechanicals are likely to land, so.
Yeah.
Valid point, and it's something we would eventually get to. And wanna see in a plan.
To that, to that point, uh, Mr. Chair. Did you guys, there's a lot of roof there, did you guys think about, uh, solar panels? Have you thought about that at all?
Uh, we haven't discussed about that, it's a good idea if, uh.
I've just noticed, uh, you know, buildings this size, they tend to. Let them with solar panels, that's just something to think about.
Certainly, no shade into fear.
Jerry, have you thought about that?
Um. I thought about it on the existing, and I got a company out, and they said they couldn't do it because the struts underneath, the the structure underneath wasn't. Um, firm enough, but we could definitely on the addition, um, you know. Look at it before we do the actual roof, um, design.
Yeah, and Jerry, what do you think, Jerry, what do you think about, what do you think about these thoughts, if I may, Mr. Chair, I I'm kind of cross-examining my own client, but. But this is just a really good discussion, and 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 if I can ask my client, Mr. Chair, uh, how you feel about the landscaping part of what we're talking about here? And and is that something you're?
I'm definitely in favor of it, yeah.
You'd like to see that on the site.
The more, yeah, the more greenery, you know, that we could get in, you know, the better aesthetic looking it would be. Um, even with the windows, you know, I I can see the point about the the big square box, you know, if we can break it up. Um, definitely, we can see where the racks fall inside and try and fit in a window in between. Maybe two or three along the side.
Or up high, even natural light coming in up high, or something, you know, something, yeah.
I'm definitely open to all of them suggestions.
Okay, so we got some things to work on, that's good.
You know, on the, on the solar system, though, they, you know, there are companies out there that will come in and put it in. And they take a certain amount of the power, and you take a certain amount of power, so. So, and and I don't know what it would cost to beef up. The lower building to get some panels on there, or there might be areas where the panels can go, it just can't go across the whole roof.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Well, Brian, that's a conversation with W R M L G.
Yeah, we, I could, yeah, we've got the people we can talk to, Jerry, okay.
Now that they're open to that.
Yeah, yeah.
Question on the rendering, is there a reason the? The driveway and pavement is a different color, is that just the way the rendering came out, it's not, doesn't show it as paper?
It's paper.
It looks, it looks nice.
Paper, it's papers, yeah.
No, papers, papers, right, that's nice.
I don't think we intend it papers here.
I I think the trucks would break them up pretty quick.
Yeah, and the snow, you know.
Yeah, I think there's a lot to think about, Brian, here. But a good, a good project.
Okay, so the other, the other thing is, is I just wanna get ahead of this, uh, the question I have for the board is the, um. The, uh, the DPW memo which you got last minute, they referenced something about, uh. Traffic study, T A C, do you, do you see a need for that with what's happening here? Because if you do, I I wanna get ahead of that.
I, from my standpoint, if you tell me that operationally, all the eighteen-wheelers. Are coming in off of Melvin. And we're gonna restrict them to not ever go down to the ball field. But that's operationally not gonna happen. And that you're literally talking about fifteen employees. I don't personally feel like you need a T A C, if it's not gonna be a trucking. Destination.
Yeah.
But I don't know how others feel.
I agree with that, just keep the trucks away from the. The baseball field in the playground.
What if someday this turns into a Amazon warehouse? Hey. And it's owned, it's fine. But there's trucks everywhere.
Well, that's my concern, Mike, with with. Overnight parking and all that, so I think we can put some restrictions on the site. You know, that there will never be more than. Every doorful, like sixteen trucks at the max, or. You know, ten trucks, they they've just gotta really manage. Unfortunately, you're dealing with truck drivers and. You know, when they show, when they show up at three in the morning and they've had ten hours under their belt. They're they're just pull in, park, and wait to be told where to go in the morning. Um. So. I think somehow we do have to restrict that a little bit, or figure out operationally how you how you manage that.
But Mickey, to your point, if this use did change down the road. Then they. They have to come back for some, either permit or, you know, there'd be another bite at that apple to, and then maybe do a traffic study or look it up. Their aspects, if operationally it was gonna change what's going on on the site.
But would it be a change of use, though, would it be the same use?
I don't know, I potentially, or they'd need, you know, a fine.
They're looking for a special permit, so we can condition it however we want.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, Jerry, I don't think that's the goal, I mean, Mike, I respect the point, um. Very much, so I can say. Dealing with Amazon. If, I think if. And who knows, the business plan might change, you know, companies change all the time, but right now, the way they operate, they would look at this place, no offense, Jerry, they would laugh at it from a size perspective.
Yeah, it's too small.
But that could change, who knows, maybe their business plan changes in five years, I don't know, but. I mean, Jerry, that's not your goal here, right?
Definitely not.
Yeah, okay, so we can, we can work around that, the point's well taken, Mike.
Yeah.
What's, what's the other route, is it through McClellan, is that what you're saying? That's where most of it's gonna be coming through?
Yeah. Yeah, right, uh, through here, Joe.
And so McClellan's okay with that, they.
There's a right, they have, uh, the, these folks have rights, and we've actually talked to John, and John's fine, well, John's a good neighbor.
Well, there's a paper street. Melvin Street goes. Like it showed behind the property there, and it goes out to New Salem Street, so.
Right here, this is, this is actually a street, Melvin Street comes up here and goes right through, so McClellan. McClellan owns this property, and then they own this property the other side of Melvin Street.
Two different properties, as.
That's right, yeah. And Jerry, you had mentioned your trucks, uh, use New Salem Street, right?
All the trucks come in that way, yeah, at the moment.
But there's actually no trucking company that's gonna be running out of here, right?
No, no. We have a trucking company, but it's been ran out of Lenfield, we have a terminal in Lenfield, a truck and terminal.
So that would be my, that would be my concern, Brian, that. You know, all of a sudden, we start. Using this as as a another depot for the trucking company.
It would then be a trucking terminal, which would would violate the zoning.
Right, so I just wanna make sure that. You know, we're, we're contemplating that, which is why. You also, if you end up with trucks overnight. We end up with the same idling issue that we had at McClellan, right? If it's in the winter, you gotta run diesels twenty-four seven. So if they're coming in at two in the morning, they're still running. All night long to keep the guy warm in the cab. So we gotta just think about the conditions and the. Plan.
Yep. Yep. Understood. Sunlighting and signage and things that we haven't even got to yet, but we will. To the extent that there'll be some. I'm sure there will be some. We also received a letter from, uh, I think you've seen that as well. Yeah. In the file, okay, so. Some comments, DPW ones, we got late today, so didn't have a chance to process it much, but you'll see them, so. We didn't either, the one thing that jumped out at me was traffic part of it, and and I just wanna know how you guys feel, I figured that's how you'd feel, but that's your decision, so. Okay, but there were other comments that you'll have to. Oh, yeah. Work with them on, just in general, so, okay. All right, anything else for tonight? No, so we should really go back and look at, you know, basically how to break up the wall, we should look at. If we, you know, reducing landscaping and reducing parking and how we can buffer that. And, um, you know, that's kind of like a focus that we wanna go on at this point, right? That kind of the logic, whatever. Yep. Okay. Sounds like it, those are my notes and. Windows and mechanicals. Okay, that I can, we can, we can work on that.
Yep.
Okay, so, uh. I think we're gonna, uh, Jerry, you still here?
Yep.
Yeah, I think we're gonna need more than two weeks on that, don't you think, I can?
Oh. I think so, if we.
Because, because, you know, just so you know, I mean, if we, if we, if we were gonna present something different to the board, we'd have to submit it a week from this Friday. So it's not just like show up on Wednesday.
Yeah, no, you're right, you're right, yeah.
So, you know, I think, I think just for efficiency purposes, we should continue it to the second meeting in May. Instead of two weeks from now, so it's like four weeks from now, Jerry, instead of two weeks from now, you okay with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Right.
Yeah.
I think that makes sense, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Yeah, plus it'll give us a chance to sort through some of the DPW issues too, we're not gonna be able to do that in a week.
Yep, okay.
So at this time, we'll open up the public testimony, if anyone has a comment or question from the public, please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting at this time. Seeing no hands, we'll close it to public testimony for the evening.
I move, Mr. Chairman, that we continue this to the May twenty-fourth meeting.
Second. Thank you, any discussion? Regular voting membership?
Yes.
Go.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, so thanks for the introduction and the information, and, uh, we'll talk to you in a few weeks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, yeah, have a good night, everyone.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right, Brian, do you have both of these other matters?
No, I have the Noreya, um.
Okay. So we'll take that one up first, um. That was case twenty-two fifty-two to twenty-two fifty-five, the three fifty-six Lowell Street, Noreya Energy. Minor modifications. Yep, thank you, Mr. Chair, um. Um, for the, um. Record, Attorney Brian McGrail representing the applicant, uh, Noreya, um. With me tonight, um, is, uh, Hussein Savin Gil. And also Michael Durant, uh, on behalf of Noreya. Um, and what we require, what we're requesting is some, um, what we're, what we're. Perceiving as minor modifications, um. They deal with, there's two components to this, there's the site plan component. And then there is a, um. Uh, signage component, so I I think, um, I'm gonna do the site plan first. Um, if I may.
Okay.
Okay. So. This is at three fifty-six Lowell Street, uh. That I think the board remembers, it's the, uh, Noreya, uh, station at the intersection of Lowell and Vernon. Um, which was, uh, not too long ago, uh, approved by the board, and is as typical, um. They are now, you know, dealing with their branding issues and and a couple of other issues that. We wanted to bring back before the board, hopefully obtain a minor modification. Um, the site plan changes are pretty straightforward, you might remember, cause it wasn't too long ago, that. It was requested by the light department, the public works, and even the board talked about. The ability to possibly get some E V charging stations on the site. Um, especially with the school there. Um, and at the time, um, we weren't able to do it, we couldn't figure out a way to do it, well. Um, we have figured out a way to do it, um, subsequent, which is, which I think is good. And so this, I think, would be a minor change, we've got six parking spaces that are already here on the site. We're just adjusting the same six, but we're able to make four of these E V charging stations. Okay, I thought part of the concern before was having electric charging on a gas station site. There was separation issues. Okay. And they were able to deal with that on, on, on their permitting, when they started talking to their mechanical people. And the electrical people, they were able to figure that out. Okay. And one of them will be handicap accessible, so, you know, this is like a direction that, you know. The light department wants, you know, these charging stations, the town council does, so I think, you know, meaning wants. Charging stations available around town, I think this is just a great thing. Sure, I just remember that that seemed to be a limitation with. Having it close to the pumps and all that, but if they figure out a way to do it, then great. We're excited about it. Um, and then the other one. On the site is pretty, I think, pretty simple. Um, this is, um. This tank here is for the E eighty-five. And we're going, the only tank that's available is a six thousand gallon tank, it was originally expected as a five thousand gallon tank. So that's, we wanna change that to six. And then, um, we also. It basically forgot to put on the plan a D E F storage tank. Um, that goes with the diesel fuel. So we're putting on that site, it's called DEF. Um, and, um, what, what DEF is, is it's. Uh, a diesel exhaust fluid, that's what it stands for. And it's a very important component in keeping, uh, diesel-fueled vehicles within federal emission guidelines. So D E F or DEF is really a combination of. Um, dionysized, uh, water. And, um, urea that transforms harmful, um, nitrous oxide emissions that come out of diesel vehicles. Into harmless water and gas. So it's really for environmental benefits that DEF is available to go with diesel. Um, and now, almost every diesel passenger ve- vehicle that was built, um, from two thousand and ten is equipped. With accepting DEF. So it's like a fuel add, it's a fuel additive that goes with diesel. And, you know, stations like this have a different, different options of ways to sell it, they could sell it in their store. That people would buy it in plastic bottles and put it in their tanks. But it's much more environmentally friendly, if someone needs the DEF with their diesel, they can just do it right at the same pump. So, alls we're asking for on this is just an adjustment to. The tank, and then there'll be one, uh, pump. That will, there's only one diesel pump that will have the DEF, uh, the DEF, uh, option to it. People needed, it will be marked that they can get the DEF at that pump. So, um. Those are the only, um. Changes that we're requesting on. The site plan. Okay, this. Pump, this is the pump that would have the, have the DEF in it. Here. Understood, board members, any comments or questions?
That's a three thousand gallon tank for DEF, Brian?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
You don't need it all the time, it it's like a.
Perfectly aware of what it is, I'm just.
You watch it, yeah, I can imagine.
I'm just curious, as I've never seen it being able to be pumped, it's always. Been plastic bottles that I'm aware of, so this is new to me.
Just more environmental friendliness, little plastic bottles.
Yeah, don't make sense.
EV spots, are they gonna be marked E V only, and I know we were, I think there was some parking issues. Uh, calculation wise, I think we had, you know, a a big discussion about the, the. The spots at the.
Yeah.
Pumps being included, are they gonna be, uh, marked E V only, or?
No. Okay. No, I mean, they're gonna be marked E V, so I think people are gonna see them E V, but. You know, it's not, no one's gonna be prohibited from parking there.
They need to be marked E V, you can see the charger, I mean, you'd see the charger before you see the ground.
Yeah.
Unless that's some sort of requirement, I don't know why it would be, because I take the E V on the ground as being E V only, but.
Yeah. Hussein, can you, uh? Provide anything on that, or Mike?
Uh, good evening, board members, uh, Mike Durant with Noreya here. Uh, just to, um. Speak a little further. Yeah, uh, E V, the E V parking is not required to be dedicated just to E V vehicles. Uh, anyone can park there. Um, but if, if. We need to. Uh, we, I suppose we could. Provide some signage, but typically just ground markings are sufficient.
I think that's the preference of the board, is to leave it open and not limit it to E V, yeah.
And not put the ground markings. I mean, you, you can tell it's E V, you can see the charger.
Yeah, the board, the board would not rather have E V on the ground, because they're concerned that that way, uh, people, it would lose parking spaces. Because people would just not park there, cause they would think it was only for E V cars only. So I think what the board's saying, Mike and Hussein, they have no problem with the chargers, but they just don't want the spaces specifically marked that way.
Not a problem.
That's fine by us, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, if there's nothing else on the site, you wanna go to page two and we can talk about signage and branding?
Yeah, I'm just making a note on that. Okay. And I. I, I think, Jim, uh, to refresh the board's memory, Jim McBame was the, uh. World Liaison, um, for signage, so, you know, Jim, I've worked through Jim on these. Modifications, so he's, he has seen them. So I'm sure he can answer questions, and I can bring up the. I can bring up the old ones if necessary, which might be, I don't think you probably need it on this, but you might need it on, on the, on the freestanding sign on what we're doing. So basically, what, what's happening here is. Um, that, um, Noria has a deal with Shell that they've realized that they have to have, that they have to have the Shell branding on their gasoline. Um, so that's why, um, they're not changing the. Size of anything here, they're just changing kind of the way, the way it's branded. And, and they've shown the detail on the pump. Because that, that's what they had on the, the rear. Um. And. Then this was the canopy, and to refresh the board's memory. The, the key thing with the canopy with the board was. That, um, you did not want the bands lit. So that's, and so you, it was, it was stated that way, so we're being very clear on the canopy if it's modified. That. You'll see this line here, these lines, it says, applied red vinyl stripe, not illuminated, yellow flat panel, not illuminated. White canopy fascia, not fascia, not illuminated. Um, and then. The, and then it's specific on this too, the shell sign, and this is the same dimension. As the Noria round sign that was gonna go up here. Um, but on this, what we're saying is, is that the pecturn. Pecton is the only thing that's illuminated here, so the white. On that sign is not illuminated, only the shelf. Would, would be illuminated. Um, this is aligned a little bit different than the Noria, and Jim pointed this out. That you can see this goes a little bit, this goes above more than it goes below. It's just the way the square, it sits better that way, that the circle was more uniform. An equal amount above than below, but I did wanna point that out to the board, because Jim pointed it out to me. So that's the only, um, change on the canopy. Really. Just the, the coloring and, and the branding.
Brian, is this an updated plan from what's in the application?
It is, it is, because when, when I submitted it, we met with Jim, and Jim wanted this stuff put on, because it wasn't, it wasn't on, and as Jim said, you're gonna, you're gonna have an issue. Because, you know, we wanna be very clear that this stuff is not gonna be lit. For the record.
Okay.
So I'll send this to you, Mr. Chair, not, the, the, what's being proposed hasn't changed, it's really been labeling. For clarification.
Well, that band went from a Noria branded. Canopy, right? To the Shell branded.
Well, I'm talking about what I said to you Friday.
No, no, okay, yeah, 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 but I'm just trying to understand the changes, so.
Yeah. And I can bring up, do you wanna see what the original was? I'm happy to do that on this if you want.
Why, sure.
Want, want me to do it, Jim?
Yeah, bring it up.
Hang on a sec, here it comes.
As long as it doesn't crash your computer.
Yeah.
So while you're doing that, Mike, or maybe Hussein, what's the relationship with Noria and Shell, like, we've got both signs on here? Is one sort of the market, or is one's the gas, or?
Uh, I can, I can speak to that.
One on the other, and.
So. Uh, Shell is, is the, uh, fuel provider. We, we would end up selling, uh, Shell fuel branded fuel. So we have to. Brand and advertise. Shell as the, as the fuel brand out there.
Okay.
I've seen the same thing up in Maine, basically, where Cumberland happens to be the. Provider or something like that, or. Others, basically, where, but the store is run. As Niaga.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, so it was just a different color scheme.
Mm-hmm. But just to address that, in, in up in Maine, Cumberland doesn't. Provide fuel for Noria, it would be a Noria branded C store with Irving oil possibly.
Serving, I'm sorry, yes, you're right, it's serving, yep. Yep.
Okay. All right, so Brian, what else is changing, let's, uh, yeah, keep it moving.
No problem, um, last, last part of it. Okay.
Thirty minutes before twelve. Once again.
Yeah.
Crash.
So what's happening here is, um. Uh, first thing I'm gonna point out is, they've, they've selected their, um. Tenant sign, which is, it's gonna be written, Noria's kitchen, kitchen, kitchen featuring the mottos. Okay? So that's gonna be the tenant, so you reserve the right to approve the tenant sign, but there was, it was specified where it was gonna go. And it's gonna go right here in the front of the building, now, you had also approved one on the side of the building right here, facing Lowell Street. Um, and they've decided to get rid of that sign. They, they, they don't see a need for it. So, so we're losing a sign on the side of the building that would, would have faced Lowell Street. So I, I would assume there's not an issue with that, um.
But it's on the front and it's on both free standing ones, so they've still got presence.
That's right, yeah, it is, and they figured that too, Mr. Chair, they really didn't need it, it was, they, they were comfortable with it. So, um, so what's, what's happening here is, the change is. Um, this is. This is. I'm sorry, Jim?
That's the canopy.
This was a canopy spec, which you already saw, okay, and it's all labeled on what's lit, but, you know, it's, so that's that. And then the only other change is the freestanding sign. Um, what they've done is, the size of the sign has not changed. But the, the rear that was there before was five feet. And I'll bring it up in a minute, and these, the, the gasoline and the, um. The tenant sign were bigger. So, because they need to get this Shell logo on there, so they've shrunk these down, and they shrunk this down a little bit, in order to be, be able to fit both of them.
Okay.
So the concern that, uh.
Jim, I'm sorry, Jim, I wanna, I wanna also point out that before, and I'll show you in a minute, this entire Noria, uh, Noria sign was blue. And now what they've done is, the backing, they've made it the, the same as the front of the building. To match it. And the only thing that lights up on this is. The ring and the Noria, so that, that backing does not light up. And the only thing that lights up on this is the Shell logo, not the entire cabinet, obviously, so sorry to interrupt you, Jim.
So it's only the yellow and red that?
That's right.
Goes up on that, okay, so like, the concern I had with it, whether this is too much sign. Or whether it's too much light, so you, you, you need to think of that in my mind, basically. With the change, and, and Brian can show you the previous. Condition, which didn't have a shell in it. But everything else was larger, but it's the formats, the same, the same height. Uh, of signage, the same height of the whole freestanding sign, the same width, it's just the format within that. Block of signs.
So I'll show you the way it is now, and Mike, can you confirm, Mike, I just don't wanna make a misrepresentation, I wanna make sure, Mike, the white does not light up here, right, it's just a yellow and the red.
Yes, that's correct, Brian.
Okay, thank you, make sure I'm correct here. And I'm gonna go to the, um, what was approved before, so you can kind of lock this in your memory for a minute. Here it is. So all this stuff down below has gotten smaller. It's the gas pricing that's lit up, and all, these have all shrunk, and the tenant sign shrunk. And this got pulled down. To, instead of five feet, to eight feet to fit, and this sign has become four feet, so now you get two, two smaller signs, one Noria, and this was blue before. And. Now, as I mentioned, it's gonna have the backing at the front of the building.
Yeah, as Jim said, now there's just. Twice as much light on that, on each sign with the additional logo. So something to consider. Doesn't mean it's a minor modern, not a minor, but it's just. But.
Okay. Remember our O and M and the hours of operation, it's just twenty-four seven?
Yeah, and you've got a condition, you know, you've got a bunch of conditions on this, one deals with lighting that we have to meet out at the site, if you remember, to adjust the lights. Um, and then the other one deals with the noise, that we have to have a post-noise study chip, so you, you, you had some pretty.
I was just wondering whether this, this thing can ever be turned off, but it doesn't sound like it can be.
What, this sign?
Yeah.
Um.
Burn a day.
Yeah. You, you, you know, let me, let me just go to your condition, because you, you conditioned this, so you.
I, that's why I was asking if it's twenty-four seven, I couldn't remember right off the bat.
Yeah.
We talked about dimming, like, the pumps, the canopy, you know.
But I don't think we ever talked about the freestanding.
I think it, yeah, no, you dealt with all signs, Chip, hold on, let me just see, so you have a full, full knowledge in making this decision, um. We're just gonna open it up real quick.
Okay, since there's a pause, do we know what the start date and end date is for this? They starting real soon?
Yeah, pretty soon, right, Mike?
Uh, yes, we're in preparation to file for demolition and building permit.
And what you've got here is.
Like a year?
Uh, total construction. Is estimated roughly around six months.
Nice.
Yeah, so what it says is, it says limited hours of management, lighting hours and management. Uh, all exterior lighting in the property, including but not limited to sign lighting, shall be dimmable and programmable, so that the lighting levels may be automatically reduced or lowered. Prior to opening for business, the applicant shall meet with a designated board member or members at the property to evaluate and determine the appropriate light levels to be maintained at the property. Between the hours of eleven PM and four AM. Once determined, the applicant shall maintain and comply with the agreed upon reduced or lowered light levels between those hours.
Good, so we'll be able to, so the, as Jim's concerned, the more light. Will be able to dim it a little bit.
Yep. All right, anything else? Board members?
For me.
Okay. Mike, Mike, those were all the changes, right, I just wanna make sure I got everything here, um.
Yes, that, that was all of them.
Jim, that's all you had, cause you went over these with me, I just wanna make sure.
No, that's, that's it.
I had the, uh, the pump detail we talked about, the canopy. With the logo, yep, the freestanding sign, okay, and. Yep, okay, thank you, sorry, Mr. Chair. Mm-hmm.
So, Mr. Chair, based on the presentation this evening. Uh, for Noria Corp at Lowell Street, I believe that what was presented to us tonight for changes. Uh, falls under the minor modification qualification.
Seconded.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Ever approving.
My modification? I will, I. It's, he still didn't. Uh, prove, I, I, are you saying I can't speak, cause I'm not a regular voting member?
No, you can, seriously?
No, you can speak.
Oh, you said regular voting, right, as I tried to, I was like, hey, that's kinda.
I was about to say, regular voting members, it didn't sound like.
No, 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 Chip only moved that it was a minor modification and not that, the, that, to approve it as, to approve the actual modification.
Oh, okay, so.
That it is a minor modification and that we should approve it.
Seconded.
Uh, approve it as a minor modification.
Yes, the, the changes that were presented to us, as, yes. So. I mean, certainly the decision, we got the language right, but I think we got Chip's point, so I got a second on the amended motion.
Second on the amended.
Thank you, thank you. Any discussion on the amended motion? All right, regular voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Tom? Yep. I have a guess, is that unanimous, Brian, you'll get us a copy of this updated plan?
Yep, I will, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, board members, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Appreciate your patience, as you can see, we have a busy agenda.
Good night.
The last but not least. One fifteen Albion Street, minor modifications.
Yes, uh, good evening, everyone, and thank you, uh, to the members of the board for the time here tonight. Uh, my name is Dave Jonatassio, um, one of the owners, uh, trustees of. The, uh, one fifteen Albion Street condo association. I will go ahead and, and share my screen, but if you could, uh. Forgive me in advance, I, I don't think I've. I've ever given a presentation this late, so, uh, hope this will be a, a quick one for you guys to, to wrap up, um. But I, I will say thank you again, I really appreciate what you guys are doing for the town, and. Did learn a lot from sitting in on, uh, on the meeting tonight, so. Uh, myself and, and Nick Donovan. Uh, are here on behalf of the one fifteen condo association, requesting a minor modification, what we believe is the minor modification. Amendment, uh, request to remove the existing pergola structures, uh, to our buildings' roof decks. Uh, so I did put together just a brief. Uh, summary here of what the specific request is, um. Uh, essentially, what we are requesting, uh, is to make an amendment to the zoning board decision dated, uh. September eighteenth from two thousand and six, uh, to remove the remaining pergolas that are in place on the buildings' roof decks, uh, units one and four. Uh, these were primarily made of what appears to be aluminum, um. And since completion, uh, of the, the building in, in two thousand and eight, uh, these structures have experienced some significant. Deterioration and rust, uh, to the point where we've, um. We've expressed some safety concerns, and actually, we've actually, we've gone ahead and removed. Uh, these structures from units two and three, already, just due to the condition of where those structures were. Um. These perla is also proved to be non-structural, um, and we're simply, simply fastened to the existing interiors and walls with screws. Uh, and at the base of the units, uh, were blocks of cement, uh, that were actually keeping those structures in place, which we think may have caused some additional issues. Uh, that we are, we are trying to take care of with what was. The initial building permit that we requested. Um, so just as a summary, um, this is the location of the building. Uh, in question here, uh, here's a, an example picture of the building, if, uh, if you folks aren't familiar with this already. As you can see here, this is a, a relatively recent photo, uh, where you can see that the structures are still in place, and, uh, you, one and four, but not in, uh, units two and three. Um, here is just a brief overview of the. The original master deed and floor plan, where you can see. Uh, they do recognize the, I believe they're called trellis, uh, as the, the structures. Uh, that were included on the original floor plan here. Um. Just again, for some additional kind of evidence here for the, for the members of the board to see. Of the existing condition of the structures that still remain, and that we do believe are, are kind of safety concerns here. Uh, just the rust, uh, here's some, some pictures from the actual. Um, ground, looking up at the building, uh, something that, you know, we would just like to have removed going forward. Um. Here's a couple other pictures. Of the actual structures kind of in question here. Um. I do have some s- s- additional supporting detail, but I, I guess I'll, I'll ask if there are any questions or anything I missed, I know I'm, I'm probably not as formal as, uh. Mr. McGrail and some of the folks that preceded me here tonight, but, um. We do, we did believe that this constitutes what is a minor modification to the existing, uh, building. Uh, plan and the, the permit that we have in place, uh, and would like to continue with. Our project to. Remove the, the perg- pergola. Our project to remove the, the per- pergola structures, uh, replace the existing siding, just with. Um, like-for-like materials, like-for-like color, uh, and some uh repairs that need to be. Done to the roof, which again, we, we believe may have been caused by having these structures in place on the roof in the first place.
Okay, thanks for that, good find job. I think, board members, any comments or questions?
Um, the only question I would have, David, should we? Uh, uh, memorialize the removal of two and three, just so that. If anything ever came up, or in the future, that they did have permission to remove two and three. That we just make it a minor modification to remove all of them.
That all of them, yeah, being.
Yeah, I think that's a great catch, Chip, yeah, I would agree with that, and I think we probably did. Remove those prematurely, in, in all honesty, I think it was just, we didn't realize, it was a, but yes, I, I agree.
I think with a safety issue, you never premature.
Okay, yeah, well, I, I, for the, I, I guess, um, tech, technically speaking, yes, I, I think that would be. Um, that would make sense in this case, that we.
Then, then all your deeds are clean and.
Right, right, absolutely.
Well, again, they're on the original plan, we would note that, right, that's why you're here, the, the original site plan and, and architectural showed them. Um, now they're being removed, and we would note that in a decision that the removal of all pergolas as shown on the site plan and the decision dated. Whatever, right, October, uh, night, two thousand and six, so. Um, it just, yeah, it, as Chip said, it makes it clean, that all are being removed, and it just so happens that a couple already happened for safety concerns, so. Um, that's, that's really not, um, a, a concern for us at this point, okay, anyone else?
I see his quarters, if just don't tell me the score of the game, cuz I've been having on tape.
Oh, you see, there'll be, there'll be another one against uh the Panthers, unfortunately, it's a tough one. Overtime loss, so.
You're gonna watch it.
All right, well, now Tom's not gonna watch it, okay, so. All right, any other comments on this, let's just keep it on the rails, we wanna beat the midnight clock, okay? Um, so in my opinion, these uh would constitute minor modifications, so it doesn't alter to the original decision in a material way. Um. The only question I had coming in is whether they were gonna try to redo them, uh, in a better way, but it's your purview, if you just wanna remove them altogether and just. Repair the structure and move on, that's fine too, but that was my only question coming in, what you wanted to be.
Yeah, we, we'd like to keep them removed, just to keep a clean look moving forward, um. Yeah. We will, we'll be submitting a, yeah, we'll be submit, submitting a perfect permit to the town hall, there's some rotting on the. Roof deck up there, it's gonna be the same material, same color, so cosmetically for the building, nothing changes, it's just strictly removable of, of the pergolas, um.
Okay.
Is where we got hung up last time, so. That's where we're at, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, board members, anything else on this one?
Oh, this is good.
Okay, um.
Well, Mr. Chair.
Uh, don't see any members of the public left, other than the people present for this application, so.
We did public on minor mods.
I'm, oh, well, generally no, but if somebody had a question, I would certainly entertain it even at this point, but I see no members of the public, so let's move on.
All right, so I. That we deem the, what was presented to us as a minor modification. And we accept the minor modification of removing all four pergolas for safety reasons on the building.
Seconded.
All right. Any discussion? Regular voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I vote yes, all right. So it's unanimous, or we'll, uh, we just gotta write it up, uh, it's, it's, we've got a good template for a minor modification letter.
Okay.
Um, so, um, I'll get that drafted unless, unless you wanna take a crack, but I can certainly do it for you, and send it off to you for review, I'll work. With Gail to get your contact info, and uh.
Okay. Yeah, if you, if you have a template, I'm happy to, to write it up, to try to make it easier for you, um, and I can work with Gail on that, just so we can keep moving, I know you guys have a lot on your plate, so. I definitely appreciate it.
We'll work offline, we'll get it done, it's just, we, we gotta, yeah, type up a quick letter, we got a good template, I signed it on behalf of the board, and it gets filed with the building department in the file here, so.
Okay.
All right, so precisely, just wanna let you know how it goes if you're new to this, so, all right. Thank you for your time and appreciate your patience, somebody had to be first, and they didn't, someone had to be last.
So, all good, no, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Have a good night.
All right, have a good night.
All right, item five, clerk and board comments, any topics for discussion tonight, board members?
Not for discussion, but for commentary, tomorrow, the church construction starts with the excavator.
Awesome, woohoo, glad to hear. So somebody actually asked me a random question about that, they said, is the tree on the corner of the property gonna remain?
Unfortunately, it's not.
And I wasn't, I went to the site plan, and it didn't look like it was staying, I couldn't detect, cuz there's a bunch of new stuff going on, and I said, I don't know, it's hard to tell, and she was hopeful that it. Like sentimental reasons or whatever, that the, like, lone tree would remain.
Actually, it looks good, but is about probably three years left on it if it stayed there, there were two others that got taken down because it was so rotted. This is not far behind, but unfortunately, if, if we let it up for, say, two more weeks, it will flower fully.
Yeah.
But, yeah, it's not got two weeks left in it, I don't think.
All right, I just figured I'd ask, somebody asked me, and I tried to answer from the site plan, but, anything else, board members, any other? Questions?
Bylaw Monday night, if you guys are available.
Yeah, May, May first.
Look for me. Not gonna be there.
Well, this is the next meeting in the series, it's, it's gonna take a little while, as we discussed before, but, all right, I might be there, Joe, I'm not sure yet, but uh, yeah, um, okay.
On Tuesday night, you get to meet the MBTA communities. Which we are making progress, nothing substantive to update, just discussing where, if we should do two or more. How do we spread them out, what they would look like, what height should be, stuff like that, so.
Okay. All right, if nothing else, uh, item six, approval of minutes of April twelfth.
I move the, we approve April twelfth minutes as written.
Seconded.
Any discussion, all in favor, all members? I.
I moved that we adjourned. Second.
No, we got eight more minutes.
Are you sure?
I'm positive, good night, bye.
Night.
All in favor?
Bye, folks.
Good night.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you, everyone, have a good night.